...because of a miscommunication, Misty Dakota did not get to present their request. And so Brian is here tonight to give us his request for budget funds.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight.
We want to come up front.
Since we're all pointing this direction.
I didn't know there was a podium here.
No podium here.
Hey, how you doing? Not sure if you're aware of what happened with the other night, but there was a miscommunication. Went to the wrong email and I was not aware of it. So I won't take responsibility for it, but we'll start out here tonight. So I'm Brian Spitzer, I'm Vice President of the South Dakota Scholarship Fund. Our request is for $5,000 this year for funding. As you most are aware, we had contracted the city earlier this year to put in a new sound system at the Mueller Center. And how many people despite a show of hands were at events through the pageant elite this year?
Oh, yeah.
Four people on the board. So the sound, in addition to the lighting that the board spent approximately $17,000 on this year alone, made the event an outstanding event for all those attending. We had a good attendance this year. We can always improve. The main key for us was actually getting the improvements done and paid for so we can subsequently not have to spend those monies every year. Prior to this year, we were spending anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000 per year to rent the sound and light systems that we're putting in the gymnasium. Not to mention 10 days worth of time volunteers time to set it up. This year, we got it all done. It's in place. You no longer have to rent any equipment for the pageant. Now, we have left the lighting in place. The sound, of course, by our agreement, reversed to the city for maintenance and upkeep. We will be looking down the road to, you know, talk about the lighting scenario in that respects too. Like I said, we've left that in place. We dropped between $15,000 and $17,000 dollars on that. I know the play used it last week. I attended one night and that was a very well set up play. I know the concert series plans on using it. I really think we should have some conversations amongst the pageant board itself and the city in future times. This isn't a time for the night about revenue sources and means of getting that paid, you know, a payback for the city as well as the pageant. We prefer to leave it in place as opposed to tear it down and put it back up every year. And I think that benefits a lot of the city. I know I sent the financials to Misty earlier in the week. I assume you all had an opportunity to look at that. That was passed off to you. Does anybody have any questions based on the financials? I can manage them to the best of my ability.
So no balance sheet? We got profit and loss statements, but they don't have a balance sheet.
We don't, yeah. Judy P. Star Craigers, we're trying to work away from the notepad scenario that Judy's been through three years and that's a process and process, so. If there's no questions.
If I have an opportunity, if anybody else has a question. I've noticed that in the, and maybe there's pages missing that I didn't see, but it has the City of Hot Springs as donating $1,000. And I thought there was talk last year that the City of Hot Springs donating also the use of the Mueller Center, that that would be updated and reflected in the program this year. And maybe there's a page I didn't see, but I still see the city only listed under the $1,000 mark for contributions to the scholarship program. I thought we thought about last year that they said, oh, you're right. We're sorry. We should make sure that the in-kind contributions should also be reflected.
Sure. Thanks for bringing that up. And that's a last year thing that's out of control for me at this point. And going forward now, that was a trade-out for going forward. So I guess we need to discuss if there are some needs we need to make a correction on that.
Does anybody else remember?
Yeah, I do. I do, yeah.
I remember.
We want to encourage new state.
Well, that's where we want to be. We're not going anywhere.
Right. We appreciate all the opportunity.
I just need to make sure that the council understands that the pageant has put out a large expenditure this year for the Mueller Center that should enhance the long-term viability of Mueller Center and increase revenues for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Sorry for the miscommunication. Glad to guide the opportunity.
As we start the actual budget hearing, I'd just like to just say a couple of words here just to kind of set the tone for what we plan, what we're planning attempting to do. Obviously, not all of us realize that the budget is just a plan. It's not set in concrete or stone. And there are times and situations and circumstances that change through the year that we need to make adjustments. You all, as a fiduciary governing body of this municipality, have that opportunity to do so. So I think that's an important thing. I hope that you realize that you sort of act as a board of directors. And these people that have put the budget together are municipal experts in their various Trust always needs verification. And that's why you're here is to verify that these numbers are reasonable and that they meet the goals and the direction that we as a city want to have. We've had a complex set of funds, a lot of different colors of money that can be only spent certain ways and so forth. But we also have an excellent finance officer and her assistant that can keep track of that. And our audit report bears that that is happening in this, in the city now whereas in the past that was a little sketchy because we didn't have the computer tools and so forth to keep a good accounting for that, where those various funds are. I guess Misty, Nolan before he left, and all the department hands have sat down and gone through all the various portions of the budget. They made their inputs. Obviously, everyone would like a little bit more to do more things, but we also, you know, have a limit on the revenues. But that doesn't necessarily ensure that their decisions are valid. And again, that's why you are a cross-check to ensure that we're making the investments in the right areas to ensure we're heading in the direction that we should be as a city. I guess overall too, I think it's important that we pause and we look at our city's responsibilities first and foremost are provide certain services, not security to our residents, that's water and sewage, keeping our streets open and flowing. And those things have to get done. We cannot sacrifice it in those areas. And then to a certain extent, quality of life is important to our citizens. And so we have certain things that add to that that no other communities have, like a plunge, a world-class golf course, a world-class library. So we need to keep those things funded. And as we look at going through this budget, I would encourage you to look at return on investment. Because that's an important function of what we're doing. How does that money we're investing either keep those services that were required to supply or enhance our ability to grow our tax base? Note I said to grow our tax base, not necessarily raise our taxes. But we want this community to grow and we have the opportunity to make those investments that allow that to happen. So where we can, I think it's important that that be an overriding part of our discussion and in ways that we can develop future revenue for Hot Springs, both in the area of sales tax and in the area of our property taxes or in the area of making our business enterprises, which we do have, more profitable. As we go through this, we're going to have some disagreements as to where that money should go. Discussing money often makes people a little more passionate than normal. So I would encourage that we, you know, have a professional decorum as we have those disagreements and open discussion because that's what makes this budget right and real if we take into all consideration. And that's why we've asked the public to be here, to have their inputs and they have, you know, it's all of our money that we're dealing with and allocating. And we realize that's an important aspect for all of us to remember. So with that said, I think, Misty, you've got some details to get us started looking at our revenues.
Yeah, just a few things. Thank you, George. So this is a good start to our budget hearings. I wanted to just review and compare what you're, what you have in your books and what you're going to see on the screen and kind of explain why we have two ways for presenting this information to you. The reports that you have in front of you come from Banion Fundacoming Software. So the reports that we run in full, our proprietary reports designed by Banion. And these Excel spreadsheets are things that we can manipulate so that we've developed to work in coherence with this. So give us the opportunity, add some notes, combine some fields where we did in 2016, we did some changes to the object codes, which are the second set of numbers that you see there so that we are in compliance with the Department of Legislative Audit and the way they wanted us to report those revenues. For the most part, we didn't see a lot of changes, but we did have changes to some of them that fall in line with the reporting they require. So in Banion, when you change a fund's number, you can't get rid of the old one. So you develop a new one and the information from the old one doesn't go to the new one. So in some areas, when we're reviewing both revenue and a few areas and expenses, the reports you have might show zeros for 2015 and 2016 because we changed those numbers. But on our Excel spreadsheets, we're able to put it all together under the new number. So bottom line is everything should match. Just some of the data might be a little bit different from years past because we can put the numbers where we want them to be in here and we couldn't change them in the software because they don't want people going in and changing some data in there. So all, this allows us to make real-time changes. This is more fixed and would require me going into the software and making changes after you review this and we get through these next couple of days and we approve a budget, then I'll put it into our accounting software and then we'll have our budget ordinance that will pass for 2018. So I just kind of wanted to explain the differences and the similarities and then talk about our plan of attack. Today, if we, or tonight, if we can get through revenue for all of our funds, that would be great. And then if we still have time before our eight o'clock deadline, if we want to start in on expenses, I would recommend that we start in like our 211, 212, 213, our other governmental funds. The general fund has 23 departments, so that's going to take a big chunk of time. So I think that we should hit those. And the enterprise fund expenses tomorrow if we can't get to them tonight. So that's kind of the plan of attack for the next couple of days. There are in your packet some notable budget expenses. Those are things that you'll see as we go through departments and expenses as bigger amounts. Now, these are just things that were asked for. This is where a lot of the opportunity comes to discuss what's important to us and what we want to get done for the year. But remember that all of these recommendations come from committees who have been reviewing their plans. So although it's okay to make changes, there might be times it seems like I'm defending or advocating for something when really I'm just trying to make sure that you understand what the background has been to get us to this point. And none of this is personal to me, so I hope none of it's personal to you. We have a big obligation here with our neighbors' dollars and we're going to do the best we can to get as many things done that are in our plan because if we don't put it in the budget, we don't have any right doing it next year. So anything we want to get done has to be in the budget, but if you see an opportunity and you cut, I'm not going to take it personally. And if I seem like I'm defending it, it's just to make sure that everybody's aware of the work that got us to this point. There are some pitfalls I want to point out. Sometimes when we compare where we're at year-to-date or what we spent last year, we miss an opportunity to identify one-time expenses. So you may see that somebody's budget went up $50,000 this year from last year, but maybe they need a new $50,000 roof. So just be aware of that pitfall. We'll talk through them when we get there. But comparing is always good, but sometimes it doesn't work quite right, which is another reason we would like to use the Excel spreadsheet with the Banion reports together so that we can see those things. When we're going through revenue, this is going to set the stage for what we can do with expenses. This is a two-sided thing. We can't continue to raise expenses and not continue to raise revenue. And our means of finance as a city are limited. It's tax dollars. The majority of the money for our general funds is tax dollars. Now, our enterprise funds, they can generate some revenue. Two of them don't generate enough revenue and are looking for subsidies to support them. But let's remember that as we go through this, we can't, we can't be crazy with our revenue projections just to offset some expenditures. And although we have an opportunity to apply cash, cash reserves to make our budget balance, we should always do that with as much caution as possible because if we continue to raise expenses and don't raise revenues, if it's a one-time expense, that makes sense. But if it's an ongoing expense and your means of finance is not increased, you have to begin to think about where you're going to make that cut. I think George kind of talked about the business models are different when we're city government. So if I'm a business, I'm profit-based. My motive is for profit. Our motive should be service and the general fund is the major fund that we fund with tax dollars that we have to provide that service with. So our goal is to determine what services we can provide with the spendable resources that we have. One other thing before we get started reviewing the revenue that I want to talk about is the difference between budget and cash. So at our budget workshop that Helen came to us with, and I always use my hands when I make this example, we talk a lot about what we can do as officers. So if we don't have cash, but we have budget authority, we can't spend any money. If we have budget authority and we don't have the cash, we can't spend any money. So we need both in order to get things done in 2018, both the budget authority and the And that goes for all our funds. So are we ready to get started? So the first parts in your books are revenue after the notable budget expenses and the explanation of our different funds. And the first one will probably render the most discussion. Is there anyone else at the president that wanted to speak? I see Shet close here. You're just here to watch?
Unless you should have questions.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't leaving anybody out. We receive from the county auditor a letter that tells us what the max amount we can levy for the next year is. Since the property tax freeze, the way that we assess property taxes is by the max amount levied the year prior. So that's where we start with the 1,037,943, which is what our 2017 amount levied was. Then CPI, which is Consumer Price Index, and it has to do with growth. And then growth of our property tax values. So the max increase for the city this year will, can take us to 1,000, or I'm sorry, $1,093,162. So that comes right from the county. It's more than last year. And you may hear someone say, are you raising our property taxes? So the way they determine what the mill levy is, which is the way they calculate what someone's property tax will be, is they take the value of all the property within the city and divide that by your levied amount. In 2016, pay 2017, the value of the properties in the city was $147,372,211. Our levy was $1,037,943. So our effective mill levy was 7.043%. That is for someone's city tax. Other places, the county, the ambulance service, the fire district, and schools also levy on your property tax bills. This year with the increase, our value is $155,366,000. If we take the max amount levied, $1,093,162, our effective mill levy goes down to 7.036%. So we have an opportunity to increase the amount that we levy, which increases the amount not just this year but next year because it's always based on last year's levied amount that you start with, and effectively lowering our mill levy. And the reason for that is growth.
Like new property in town?
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions about how we came to this figure? Is everybody comfortable with our levy at that dollar amount? Go ahead, Bob.
I don't have a question about how you came to it. Just, we danced around this last year and the statement that, well, the city didn't raise any taxes. Well, when you, when some of the people looked at their tax bill, they were paying more in taxes regardless of who raised it. They were paying more in taxes. So my understanding you say at this point that because the city's portion of the mill levy will go down, that current property owners aren't going to see tax increases?
We're one of five that, I believe, five total that get taxed if you live in the city. So our percentage of effectiveness on their bill is only based on what we can do.
That percentage is going to go down on that particular house. Their bill still may go up.
It's like a hundredth of a tenth of a percent.
But it's from the other component, so it's going to go up. City isn't going to be raising theirs by asking for more money from the county.
Right. Our mill levy is going down.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Everybody okay with that number? Okay, next one's general property taxes all prior year. So these are people making payments that hadn't been made in the year that it was received. It's hard to figure what that number might be. I think in your books, you've got a year-to-date where we're at right now. And when I talked to the auditor's office about that, most people are paying their taxes late if they're falling into this category. So we see a bigger collection later on towards the year in this number. So we did lower it from our projected amount for 2017, but we are 38% on target for collection up to 30. So we are pretty reserved in setting that number. These are all taxes that are remitted to the county and then remitted to the city after the county's collected them. This is our general sales and use tax. This is two-thirds of the 2% tax that's charged when people make purchases in our city.
What's the mobile home tax?
Yeah, that's charged by the county. It's a tax that people pay on mobile homes and we get it remitted to us at the mobile homes within the city.
That's a projected amount from them?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's a new code. So general sales and use tax, I just got notification, we got a big payment coming. We're a little slow this year, year-to-date, I think we're 47%. But remember that we're collecting 30 days in arrears. So what we're getting in July is for actual taxes in June. And we've got a large payment coming for the first payment in July. So this is the time we expect to really make hay in a lot of our tourist-lended activities. So sales tax increases in the summer months, obviously, and the towns are really busy. So we think that estimate of $930,000 is very reasonable. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with that estimate?
The reflection between the 2018 projection and 2016 is like $59,000.
But that's an actual amount for 16? It was on a projection. So we use this scale and they can change. And we hope to underestimate a little bit revenue and overestimate for expenses just a little bit. So it'd be great if we could hit 980 every year, but we really hesitate to say we're going to hit that number unless we have some more proof that we're going to grow bigger. You could argue we can bump that up a little bit, but year-to-date at 920, we're only 47%.
We're projecting a little on the conservative side.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
We've chatted about this a lot given that the state of South Dakota felt like this was going to be down and other places it hasn't been. Looking at the figures that we have, for 2016 was 989, we have a budget of 920. At this point, we're a little under 50%. We're seven months into the year.
But actually, we're still collecting with the sixth month in this month.
And we're projecting 10 more. So you're, this one concerns me that while everybody else is, not everybody, but the majority of the states see a decrease in their sales tax, we're still thinking that we're going to do better than everybody else.
So our, we haven't received it in yet, but we just got notice today that we got $170,000 coming to us from just July 1 through July 20. And these are people remitting sales taxes collected in the month of June. So we have those payments, we expect to continue to come in at an increased rate. So the first months we've had of this year are January, February, March, April, May, June. June is just starting to come in in July. I don't think that we're going to have any trouble hitting our 920 number and probably we'll do closer to what we did in 2016 and exceed it.
So the 170 that we're expecting to get would be added on to the 433 we've already done, which would put us well above 50%.
Yeah, and that collects through June, so we still have July, August, September, October, November, and December.
And one thing that we're noticing too, checking Black Hills, Amaham's website, the tourist level is up this year. So that's a good sign too that revenues will hold well during some.
We've been watching those pretty closely.
Well, July and August are the two most busy months for us personally, so we should get more money in those months.
Thank you.
Keep selling that ice cream.
Okay, amusement taxes is another tax that's charged in reading. It has something to do with how many video lottery machines someone has. They remit it to the state. The state gives us our portion of that. Fairly conservative estimate, same as we projected for last year. And that gets paid out two times a year.
Excuse me, just one interruption here. Brian texted me and he looked back at the program for the Miss South Dakota Pageant. And we did have a full-page ad for the Evans plunge and golf course, so.
But we paid for those ads.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, that was advertising we paid for.
He said it looked like we, that I thought those were donated, so, okay.
The penalty interest in delinquent taxes, that kind of ties in with this number up here. So it comes from the county when somebody pays their property taxes and they're late, we get a portion of that. Again, probably a pretty conservative estimate, similar to what we had last year. And delinquent taxes, according to the county, are paid more often towards the end of the Some of you may notice the exceptional amount collected in liquor and beer licenses in 2016 compared to what we're projecting. These are both liquor and beer. They're paid at two different times during the year, May and November. We've gotten our May collection payments, but November's are still coming in. And in 2016, we sold the liquor license that used to belong to.
The FW?
The FW, thank you. I don't know why I can't even remember that. Yeah, so that was a one-time nice revenue for the city, but not something we anticipate to continue.
Does that explain why we just have 20% so far this year?
That's because just the beer licenses have been paid and the liquor's more expensive and those ones came in November.
Okay.
Yep. And also the one-time liquor license fees that people pay when they have temporary licenses issued go in there.
Is that part of the percentages that affect the city on beer and alcohol?
No, those show up under the businesses names and those that's those who question we get quite a bit of revenue from that. Animal licenses are down for this year. We left our projection the same. Ash had went up just a little bit. They're not, they're, they're at, oh, they're over 60%. I thought they were down. I thought I was looking at something. I think it's citations that's down a little bit. So these licenses are like dog and cat licenses, chicken licenses, that's where those go. And we're actually doing pretty good this year in this one, 66% on target, so there's a small increase. City licenses, that's what can issue most often, those licenses, we're about 47% on target. We left that number the same. Building permits, this is where we see the growth figure tied to our property taxes. We've had, we're 120% on target this year already for building permits issued. That is exciting. No, no, we don't ever budget for grants. If we get them, great, we can do an automatic budget supplement. Unless you absolutely know it's coming, you really shouldn't. Bank franchise would be one of those codes where we had to change the number. So on your reports, you just see zero. Oh, no, there's information in that one, sorry. We left that the same as last year. The bank franchise tax gets paid once a year. And we haven't gotten it yet this year, but when it comes in, it'll be similar to this amount because we haven't closed or opened any banks in town, so we're estimating the same figure. And that again comes through the state. We get our remittance through state. We don't have to do any calculating of the percentage of that fee. They do that for us and then remit it in. They do that for us and then remit it in. Pro-rate license fees, same thing, that's like motor vehicle license, we get a percentage of that. So again, that's, it's hard to put a figure, it depends on how many people pay those license fees. Sixty-five hundred is similar. We're at eighty-two percent on target for that number already this year for our sixty-four hundred, so we feel like sixty-five hundred is a conservative estimate. Liquor tax reversion comes quarterly, three times a year. We're at twenty-two percent. We've only gotten one quarterly payment. Well, we did get January, but that went back to 2016, so we've gotten April. We'll sell another one in October, November, and then one in January that'll be for the last month. So we should hit target for that one, and no big change there. Motor vehicle license, we're at fifty-five percent on target so far this year, so we just added a thousand dollars there. Should be similar. Local government highway and bridge fund, we're forty-one percent on target. Seventy is a conservative estimate since we've exceeded those amounts.
And that money is funded from where?
The county. Actually, it comes from the state, but it gets remitted through the county.
Misty, I was just curious, the ones with the CDVG grant?
Yes.
What were those from when they were sold substantial like in 2016?
That was the building of the ambulance shed out by the hospital, and although the city did not receive any or expend any money, we were the pass-through agent for that. It took two years to build. Part of that was in 2015. They didn't make us book it. In 2016, our auditors made us book it, because they were new auditors. The last ones didn't care about it. The new ones said we had to book that since we were the pass-through agent, although we never saw any money or extended any money. We would, if we provided that service again, it'd be something that we'd have to budget for, but we don't have any plans. We're not engaged in any pass-through activities for 2018 right now.
Misty?
Yes.
Now, seventy thousand dollars highway and bridge, what do you guys use that for? The streets and building bridges?
Goes into the general, all this goes into the general fund, which pays for all of the departments, the general fund.
So, don't do that much street work, that's used for something else?
I'm sorry?
If you don't use that much street work, use that for something else.
Actually, our streets department budget's over five-hundred thousand dollars.
I know, but I'm talking about the highway and bridge fund would be for highways and bridges, or do you use it for the highways and the bridges?
So our streets department fund pays for a number of things, and it's over five-hundred thousand dollars, so, yes.
Are you asking whether that's specific?
This money is not specifically earmarked for anything. It's going into our general fund?
Really? Emailed for highway and bridge funds?
Didn't know that.
Well, in our streets department, and it does have more than that budgeted for expenses, so I would answer yes to that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that the wheel tax?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable answering that.
I'm just thinking that's what it was.
I don't think that that's the wheel tax, but, because that's new, and we've gotten this historically, right? County road tax, same thing comes through the county, similar amount listed. We're a hundred percent on target, and that comes one time per year, so it should be similar. The library allotment, although we asked for more, historically we've received twenty. To be, we decided to keep the twenty in there for our projection. If we find out we're going to get more, then maybe that can help give the library a little bit more money since they're looking for more than we're giving them.
John did give an excellent presentation at the county commissioners meeting. Just for everyone's knowledge, cities supporting the library at a higher rate than the users at the county do. So if we do not get this increase from the county, we plan to raise the library card fees for the county to help even out their support, so they support the library at the same amount that the city does.
George, does the library, does the county library card fees come directly to the city, or was that, any of that go to the county first?
No, that comes directly, collected at the library.
Okay.
So we'll raise that, won't offset the amount that we allocated.
Okay, but it is, it is a money that goes to the county and then triples back.
No.
You'll see it. We'll get down to our revenue projections for those things. Pilot, the Brookside, yeah?
The twenty thousand dollars, does the state require the county to have their budgets ready at the same time they require the city to have it? So we would like to see it go up, and they may say, you know what, you're going to ten.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they have the same September one deadline that we do, but since they've been working on their budget already, I'm guessing that they're close to the same time.
I'm just waiting to see what they approve in their budget to know what that amount's going to be.
Yeah, and for our projection, we're using twenty, because we've asked for more every year. This is what we get.
And twenty's what we always get.
The pilot money, I wish I had a better way to explain this. I'm still trying to wrap my hands around how all this works. But the Brookside and the Evans are very exempt from property taxes, and instead they have a calculation that pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes, where they pay the taxing districts within the area that they're in, a percentage that's based on their end-of-year audit numbers that has to do with rents received and capital expenditures and building repairs and utilities made, and so after their audit is done for, let's say, 2016, because you heard that their audit wasn't done, and so we got a finding on ours, because it did include theirs, when that's done, then their auditor takes those numbers and they calculate a pilot amount for all the taxing people, and then they give that to the county, and then the county distributes it out to all of us. Well, in 2016, we got two, the city of Hot Springs received two checks that were supposed to be sent to the county and allocated out to all the taxing districts. That's why there's a negative amount for 2016. Historically, we get between eight and sixteen thousand. There's no way to tell what that number's going to be before it is, so we just use six thousand as an estimate. That's probably more than you needed to hear for that, but that's how we got to that number. We don't expect any more negatives, so that's not, we should not have received that again. Reimbursements include things like banners. In 2016, we sold those banners, and we're reimbursed for the price of those. As we, maybe somebody travels and they don't want the city to pay the expense, so they reimburse, we have council members reimburses for the cost to send them to training, those kind of things go into reimbursements. We used to put, we had some law enforcement officers that had to reimburse the city for the cost of their training. We no longer list that as revenue, because it's really not. It's recognized as revenue when they owe it to us, and then as they pay it back, it decreases their liability to us. So that number, you see it being a little bit smaller, but we think that's more reasonable for what we expect to get reimbursements. We had someone hit a light pole on eighteen and seventy-one. I heard it's been knocked over like three or four times when we get paid from the insurance company for that, but we'll go in there. Golden West patronage is forty-two hundred is our estimate. You see, we get that every year, similar to the checks that you get in the mail. We do too, for the city. We'll budget for donations, although we get them. Police, they get paid some money from a company called LexisNexis. It's not very much, but that's where we get that figure from. Any questions on any of these? Stop me if you have any, otherwise I'll keep going. These little ones don't really have a big impact on our budget.
Our donations that we had though, we did that for them, but we did them differently.
Yeah, we, for some specific projects, like Light Up Our Town, Dare, the Park Pavilion, the Splash Park, we have a 501 capital improvement fund set up, and when those receive donations, they go into there, so they don't just get lost in the general fund. I shouldn't say lost, but...
Police services?
Yes.
If our police department ever decides to pick people up off the state highway, is that what, that fund will go into that?
We just better find a bond schedule passed. We haven't received any revenue from that. I would imagine that we get a percentage of that that could go into there. Fleet cutting and removal, if the city workers do that, we'll bail somebody. We didn't expect much in there. We don't do a lot of that anymore. Park electricity, if you rent a park and you say you need electricity, pay a fee, and then a new line that we hadn't had before that was just passed in 2017 is a park application fee. So now, just rent the park, you pay an application fee, and so we have a little bit of additional revenue for that. Our rec program fees, we have estimated at sixty-one hundred. I think we're a hundred-and-fifteen percent on target this year. Rec program's over, so I don't see any problem hitting that goal. Sixty-one hundred. Yeah, and these are estimates, so we'd be really, really happy if we blow these numbers.
What's that one, baseball?
All of the recreations, there's art and swimming, yeah, there's a number of different activities, and yeah, those are the program fees. But these are very, very low. I have a meeting coming up with the, this year's director, and she'll come and speak to the council at the next meeting to kind of give her summary of how the year went, but sixty-one hundred when we collected sixty-nine hundred this year is a pretty reasonable estimate. Three-fifty for Mueller Civic Center lending commissions. See, it's kind of down for this year, although we hit that target in prior years. Here's an example of when you can see numbers on the Excel spreadsheet, but on the BANON report, because we changed the three, four, six number at the front, it doesn't allow you to add that data when you've changed the number. So this is where it's been historically, and this is what we're estimating for next year.
Sixteen is where we have it.
Yeah, well, we got better controls in sixteen, and then so far in seventeen, he hurt his back and he wasn't loading the pot machine.
This is Scott?
No, this is Chris.
Chris, okay. That's right.
The vending commission includes both though, because we do get some commission from Scott. Our agreement with, what's it called? It's not Scott's vending, but Enterprises maybe? Airport vending commission estimates, airport concessions, he sells some oil out there. So, anybody, any questions about any of these? Sale of cemetery lots, when someone buys a lot at our cemetery, half of the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee goes into our 701 Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, and half of it goes into our general fund.
Misty, has there ever been an ordinance put in place for a cemetery lot here in San Antonio? Someone wants to walk in by every lot and tie them up? And we talked about this year to back out of tour on board back then or not, and I'm just curious if something's ever been done with that?
I don't think so. We haven't reached a point where capacity or lots that we can sell has been an issue, but that's a...
The problem is, like I'm saying, if one person wanted to walk in or they could buy every cemetery lot right now, and they could turn around and resell them, or whatever.
Yeah, they do, we give them a deed.
And that's why there really was talk about putting ordinance in place where someone couldn't do that.
That sounds like something the cemetery board should probably discuss.
Yeah, it's been a lot of years.
I didn't really bring anything to make notes, but I myself a note of that.
It's the only property you'll ever own if you don't pay taxes on.
Okay.
You don't have to keep a billfold in your closet.
Animal control citations, that's the one I was thinking of, that I thought was a little low so far for this year, and I know that John was out for a while with a medical emergency and his family, so that's probably something we want to achieve close to that, to see why we're only twenty-six percent on target so far this year.
I'm surprised today.
I am too.
I have a neighbor I thought he'd probably pull in this altogether, so...
Library fines, our estimate's pretty conservative. We're fifty-nine percent on target so far this year. Didn't anything miscellaneous, but we get it. We started again to receive interest in our checking account. We didn't budget for any cream milk. That'll be just nice and extra. I'm sorry for the way these print, you're missing a few, or you have to peel your thing back to see. I don't think any on this page have any numbers in them, so we're good there, but there might be a few where you have to peel it back a little bit. I apologize for that. Mueller Center building rent, we're forty-nine percent on target so far this year, so it's do like seventeen thousand, good estimate. No plans right now to increase any charges for any of these, but that's something that as our expenses increase, you know, we may need to look at, and allows our different departments of the city, but nothing right now, so no, you won't see any big jumps in expected revenue.
How much does it cost right now to rent it for a day?
I know the gym's one-seventy, because I've rented it, but the other places I'd have to look. They have a, if you go to our website, there's a sheet, a prices sheet.
All right. Nothing up there?
Huh?
It's inexpensive then?
Oh, yeah, I feel like it is, yeah, very reasonable.
Because we furnish everything out there, electricity and everything.
And it's been busy, a lot of, I mean, they're fifty-nine percent on target for their goal already this year, and if we can keep it just as busy, then that's great for all of us. Airport rentals, we're really doing good so far this year, so twenty-four thousand, a little bit higher than last year, a pretty good estimate, we're hoping. So far, we haven't made any more space for any more rentals, so hurt minus capacity unless we raise that, pay our rent there. Airport lease revenue, we have twenty-five hundred. That is income we received from an agreement to allow someone to graze.
Someone to what?
Graze, graze the outside the world.
Oh, that's a graze.
Drag grazing somewhere.
All right, so here's some of our library. Library inter loan, library items. We have two hundred, and I think we're a hundred-and-thirty-two percent on target already this year, so I feel like that's a reasonable estimate. Last year we had a hundred estimated, and we have a hundred-and-thirty-two collected so far this year. If you damage something or you lose something, you pay the library for that. We're a hundred-and-thirty-one percent on target for our two-hundred-dollar projected amount, so we bumped that up to three hundred. And library, for those of you that have been around a little while, we just started in a small portion of 2015, receiving this money into the city. Prior to that, it went into a private account, and the city didn't recognize this revenue. So in our projections for 2016, we only had a few months of 2015, and then we hadn't had all of 2016 done when we were projecting for 2017. So you see some increases, but it's not because fees increased, it's just because now we're getting a better idea of how much revenue we weren't getting before that money was coming to the city. Thirty-four hundred is what we have projected for library copies. We're at sixty-eight percent on target for the goal. We had a twenty-six hundred last year. We don't think we're going to have any problem hitting that. If you remember, you spent seven thousand dollars in 2016 on a new copier there, so the black and white copier, it's got a coin thing, you can charge to your library card, so copies are big up there. Here's where the library card revenue goes. You're asking about where that is. Only had projected twenty-four hundred last year. We're a hundred-and-two percent on target for that. We maybe could bump that up to twenty-three, or to twenty-four, but we feel like that's a fairly good estimate. If they raise the cost of cards, we could see an increased amount there. The Dare program, they've already collected enough this year to fund it for next year, and that's their goal every year, and they say it's going to take between eighteen hundred and two thousand, so you'll see expenses for the Dare program when we get to the police department budget, and it's going to be the same amount as what they're anticipating to come in. That is an amount that's within our 501 funds, so they can't spend more than they have. They can't take general fund money. This program has spent it totally on donations. And here's where the liquor percentages are, some of that's about where the liquor money comes into. So we break those down based on the business and recognize those. The three-six-two, three-six-eight number is the number that DLA prescribes for these types of things, and we used to use a different number, so that's why you see zeros in your fifteen and sixteen amounts, but you see numbers in our Excel spreadsheet, because we've just changed that number. We were receiving this revenue, even though you see zeros on your BANON report, that's because we've renumbered them to match DLA's prescription. So, most of these we could probably go through pretty quickly. We try to review where we're at year-to-date and factor in some things for some of them where we know they were closed for a few months this year that they hadn't been last year, and then we got some new places that we were trying to estimate based on the revenue from the old places. Does anybody have any questions about any of these amounts specifically?
Quite a lot of revenue, I'd like to say the major.
So what, the city has an operating agreement, because we own the liquor licenses, that they, what they buy, we charge a percentage of that. So if I'm Frankie's Place and I buy liquor from a wholesaler, the city gets a copy of that invoice, and what they bought, they remit a percentage of that. if I'm Frankie's Place and I buy liquor from a wholesaler, the city gets a copy of that invoice and what they bought, they remit a percentage of that to us.
What is it, eight percent?
It's different for beer.
Three for beer. Because we change that, because it's charged the same for liquor as beer. I remember at a liquor store, I was paying a whole bunch more than I do now, so we change that when we was on the council.
I feel bad.
So are these projections based off of the invoice? The invoices that, that they're billed from the?
Wholesaler.
Or from actual sales?
It's from the wholesaler, it's from what they purchase from the wholesaler.
Okay.
Is this just alcohol, is this beer and alcohol?
It's beer and alcohol. All right. I know I went through all those pretty quickly, but they're just based on what they did last year and fairly decent estimates. Nobody sees anything that stands out to them. I just must get past those. Cable TV franchise fees, something we get like the bank franchise tax. We've gotten it every year. I feel like fifteen thousand's a good estimate. Recovery, prior year expenditures is typically associated with our workers' comp payroll audits. Anything else that maybe we get as a refund, maybe something was returned at the beginning of twenty-seventeen that we purchased in twenty-sixteen is actually supposed to go in this revenue code. So we don't anticipate a big amount, but the workers' comp payroll audit happens every year. The reason we get a refund every year is because when we estimate for workers' compensation, what we're going to pay out in payroll for the year, we use our total payroll figures. But when they come in and do a payroll audit, they wait till the end of the year and they look at actual, they remove all holiday pay, all overtime, well, the part of overtime pay that's the point-five percent. And any sick or vacation leave, because you really don't need to cover them for workers' comp when they're not actually working. So that's why we get a refund every year and our departments that pay those. Our operating transfers in, we have it two-hundred thousand, that's a hundred from water and a hundred from wastewater. And that brings us to our total estimated revenue in the general fund for twenty-eighteen, based on these figures, two million, six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, eight dollars. Now, we're not going to talk about expenses yet today. Well, we might get to some of them, but that is the number.
Can you go back to that first?
That is the number we have plugged in here as we estimate our total amount that we need to pay. That's where that figure goes back to.
So the bottom right-hand figure, that's the amount that you're expecting revenue to go up by from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen?
Those are just differences from prior year, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Wow, we went right through the general fund. It's only been an hour. These next couple funds get a little bit easier because there's not a lot going on in them and at the beginning of your packets, they have, um, some descriptions of the budgetary funds, just to help you understand what the liquor lodging and dining fund is. The city ordinance ten forty established and dictates this fund. Funded by an additional one percent of sales tax on alcoholic beverages, eating establishments, lodging accommodations, ticket sales or admissions to places of amusement, athletic and cultural events. This fund's traditionally been used to fund the Chamber of Commerce with eighty percent of the revenue going to the Chamber. The additional twenty percent is used to pay for utilities and building repairs at the Mueller Civic Center and the depot. So we're estimating a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand projected for that fund. This is another, um, sales tax that we are going to see larger amounts receded in, in the months of July, August, September, because we're typically busier when it comes to liquor lodging dining establishments in our summer months. Any questions on that one? Only one source of revenue comes into that fund.
So they're thirty-six percent right now?
Yep, but they have a big chunk in that hundred and whatever I was mentioning earlier, and we expect in the next several months for that to continue to stay a little bit bigger, but we'll watch it throughout the year. The additional sales tax or our two-one-two fund is funded by one-third of the money collected from the two percent the city collects from South Quarter Sales Tax. City ordinance one-zero-zero-eight states the funds to be used for debt service, street improvements, street maintenance equipment, building construction, building up, keep, repair, and any other expenditure deemed necessary and approved by the common council. The revenue we're expecting in this fund, we're, uh, feel like we're very conservative in this estimate. Then our principal collective and interest and penalty collective come from our two street assessments in our VAC nine and Boulder Falls. And so since the roads are going in this year and we'll have our assessments in place, we'll be collecting revenue, but you'll also see expense when we get to, um, our expenses for two-on-two to cover the loans.
And before you go on, looking at, again, comparing numbers from one year to the next. The sales tax fund is projected to be less in two thousand eighteen than it did in two thousand seventeen? Or was projected in two thousand seventeen?
Oh, it's three hundred more. For eighty-eight-three. That's what we're projecting and we're forty-four percent on target so far this year. For our projection. And then every year, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, we exceeded that four-eight-eight. Okay, this is our bid, our Business Improvement District Fund. City ordinance eleven-oh-seven establishes fund which involves all motel, hotel, overnight lodging businesses in Hot Springs. Each entity has an additional two-dollar charge they pass along to their guests. This money's controlled by an advisory board of the members and is used for advertising, marketing, promoting the city of Hot Springs. We are projecting, that is another fund where you see they're really not in a good position so far yet this year. We projected a hundred, sorry, a hundred thousand for twenty-seventeen and we dropped that down to ninety because of our collection, but similar to our municipal sales tax, we expect these businesses to have increased, and they pay thirty days in a year, to have increased activity in these summer months during tourist season. So we're hoping they have an opportunity to make up the gap they're seeing so far. So anything they're paying in July is for June, people who stayed in June. So we're a month behind in our collection, so we dropped it down to ninety. This is another fund where, um, they, they can't spend more than they collect. We don't have any additional reserves to give to bids, so what they have is what they get.
Misty, that doesn't go into the general fund?
No, it's its own fund. These are all separate funds. This is our five-oh-one Capital Improvement Fund. We talked a little bit about it earlier and some of the, um, projects that get paid out of this fund. This was established by city ordinance eleven-thirty-eight. It counts for financial resources to be used for special, excuse me, special projects throughout the community. Currently, the funds are designated for splash park, light up our town, park pavilion, um, this A.G. Wilson Memorial, they already spent all that money, so there isn't any money left for that one. Um, and library donations is in an active account with five-oh-one fund, so I could probably remove those from here, but. We don't budget for anything, uh, because we'll take care of budgeting for that with an appropriation ordinance when the money's collected or if money needs extended. Last year, they were really active in collecting for the light of our town and they spent pretty much all of it, so we hope to see the same activity this year. Really nice to see our town all lit up.
And the baseball, T-ball group, we're not seeing that because?
Well, we're not budgeting for any of it yet because we don't know what they're going to want to spend, but we have put some money in there this year.
And that was my question, we don't see a year-to-date amount for two thousand seventeen?
Well, this is revenue projected and I haven't transferred any in yet, so. But this fund operates all by itself too, so if the money's not there, it doesn't get spent. Now we're getting into, um, our enterprise or proprietary funds. Chris talked about those a little bit differently, because these funds, um, are run more like a business. Our water fund collects the revenues and it spends out the expenses generated from the sale of water by the city of Hot Springs. And it's funded primarily through user charges. We have, uh, return check fees estimated. Fortunately, we get those and so we recognize that revenue. We're sixty-two percent on target for that number so far this year. We feel like that's a conservative estimate. Penalties, all penalties that go to the water fund, there's thirty-five hundred as an estimate, a little bit less than last year, since it looks like we're about thirty-six percent on target so far this year. Water is also billed in arrears, so you think we're in July, we should be halfway through, but we're actually getting to halfway through after July, because you don't bill for the water till after it's used. Uh, interest earned, we dropped that a little bit. We're a little over in our estimates because we're about twenty-eight percent on target so far this year.
Where does that interest be located?
Uh, we have, um, checking and, we have checking money at Bank of the West that both our water and sewer department, it's over a million dollars in total. I think they're both around seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand that sit in there and they receive interest on that. And then they both also have.
They're sitting in there as a checking account?
Yes, and that's the best interest we can get for the money.
We just changed one of them.
That's the CD, so yeah.
Uh, return check fee, is that from all the back checks that the city has that hasn't collected for the last twenty, thirty years?
No, that's for if I write, um, a check for my water bill this month and it bounces.
So are we still collecting all that back?
We always try to collect, but we don't recognize that as revenue because we don't know if we're going to. It's good if we get it, if we're able to collect it, but we don't recognize it when we're planning as revenue because we don't know.
Does that still have a company written on it?
Yep, we use credit collection.
Is that just the amount that we have collected?
No, that's the back check fee amount. And we're, I think I said sixty-two percent on target so far this year.
That's what we're owed.
It's what people have already paid us.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not what we're owed.
Okay, it's money that we receive.
Yep. And that we're, what we've received so far for twenty-seventeen and what we expect to receive for back check charges in twenty-eighteen. Uh, CD interest, a little different than interest earned. Recovery, prior year expenditures, uh, that's that workers' compensation amount we were talking about. Each fund that has that, we recognize that as a revenue source for them. Water revenue is the charges for water and sewer usage. Bulk water sales, so, um, construction companies will sometimes rent a hydrant and run water. And we have the reconnect call-out estimates. And then anyone with a fire sprinkler system pays a quarterly fee to the city. So we have, go ahead.
So our projected revenue is up. How, why?
Well, we're, uh, forty-two percent on target already when this was printed at the beginning of July and we collect in arrears, so we should hit our target revenue that we had for last year.
And then next year, we're projecting more, maybe thirty-three thousand dollar increase? Where, where's that going to come from?
Well, we expect it to come from water sales. And we can lower that number if you're more comfortable with making it lower and hopefully to exceed it, but if you look at our twenty-sixteen amount, um, we had eight-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars in sales in twenty-sixteen for water sales, so we anticipate we're going to be around seven-seventy-five for eighteen and we anticipate exceeding the seven-forty for seventeen. Does anybody want to see that number go down or?
No, I'm just curious where you expected that revenue?
We were looking at history.
Was that just a more conservative figure for, for last year's budget? With the seven-hundred-and-forty?
Yep, it's hard to know. I mean, here we are in July, talking about what we're going to do in twenty-eighteen, so we don't even know what we're going to end in twenty-seventeen yet. Anybody want to see any changes to the numbers or you quick, okay, throw that? Sorry?
We're fine.
Okay.
I'm fine.
The bulk water sales?
Yes.
Has, has there been any increase because of new location that we've been able to ascertain or?
We're seventy-three percent on target for a twenty-five thousand dollar figure for this year.
And we'll probably have substantially more as Boulder Falls, uh, construction begins. Contractor will be using.
I guess what I was wondering was whether or not the new facility was maybe bringing in a little bit more sales.
He's talking about water station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, is that what the bulk water sales is doing?
Better collection might be this part of it.
I guess it's a good question, Bob. Misty, is that new location?
Well, maybe too early to tell, but.
Yeah.
It's been open for a year, hasn't it?
No, it's been open this year.
I wish.
At least I didn't have one of them coming.
Yeah.
So what takes time? I guess.
Baby steps, right? Baby steps.
So it's going to look at some of the loading dock revenue so far this year. It's quite a bit busier in the summer, so it's hard to tell if that's a result of the new place or just because summer is busy, so, um, we do keep track in a separate spreadsheet that I don't have access to and after this year's over, it'd be a good idea to take a look at that and see.
No more new location now. As dry as it's been this year, I would think it's gotta be up.
We are, so far this year, we're at seventy-three percent, about, um, target of twenty-four thousand, so at least that's twenty-five.
It could change also because of all the new connects with the other water companies.
Yeah, all of these things can change. It's just the plan. We're doing our best to guess.
What new water company?
With all the going, piping water now.
They still have to get it from us if they're in the city.
No, I know, but from that water fill station, if they're getting water in rural, they're not going to get it there.
If they get rural water, they'll suck.
Whether it's due to new location or not, last year, that, but this time, we had, we had drawn almost sixteen thousand and we're at almost seventeen-six. So about sixteen hundred more? I don't know whether that's fair to attribute.
It probably has to do with how dry the summer is too.
I always pick myself, we're using a lot of water this year.
Are we comfortable moving on to the wastewater fund?
Yes.
Six-oh-four is our wastewater fund, again, funded primarily by user charges. Um, they get interest, similar to the water. These funds, uh, sit on some cash. Sometimes it seems like a lot of cash, but when one thing goes wrong and you see how big the bills are to fix those one things, they really do need a good amount of cash reserves. They have a small sewer assessment. They're still collecting some revenue on. I believe this is the last year we'll be getting, um, the last sewer assessment. I can't remember what year it's from, but this is the last year of payments to that. Uh, they have their workers' compensation recovery prior year expenditure amount. They have revenue for sewer charges, we're estimating seven-hundred-and-ten thousand, we're forty-nine percent on target from last year. Again, being through, um, until the end of July, we won't be collecting June's revenue, so we're not even halfway through the year yet. And that's our estimate for sewer revenue. Everybody comfortable with that?
Can we go back up to principal collected by county and the county? Looking at the year-to-date amount of a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and then a budget amount of thirty-six for next year. Is that a timing? Is that when the penalties are paid and then the city sees them or?
Yes. This is our solid waste fund. Um, if you remember, if you were at the discussion with our auditors, we talked briefly about the possibility of removing this from an enterprise fund. The city used to operate a dump site and so this fund had a lot of activity in it. And now we contract out those garbage services. Um, so we have collection fees, but we remit those fees to the service provider. And then we have a city fee that helps pay for the refuge totes and then also our dumping fees when we have the city cleanup or, um, when we have to dispose of the branch, the yard waste that's disposed of out at the, um, Old North Facility at the city street shop. So we have a hundred-and-ninety-two projected for revenue. And our contract goes through next year, so we don't anticipate any big changes in that fund. Our golf course fund, uh, six-twenty, it was transferred from the one-oh-one general fund to an enterprise fund in twenty-fourteen. This is for the full expense and revenue generated at the Southern Hills Golf Course, including both clubhouse and golf course maintenance. We're projecting a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand for green fees.
Is that admission to play?
Green fees. Green fees, yeah, members can play without paying green fees, but yes, it's like I walked up there and wanted to go.
Who's that? Non-members.
Okay, it's a non-member.
Not as talented, no. In town, they don't have a membership.
Season passes, we dropped from sixty-two to fifty-four just based on this year's numbers. We've collected fifty-six thousand five hundred and thirty so far this year and don't anticipate collecting any more memberships.
We increased our amount last year.
That was for green fees, not memberships, right?
Yeah, both of them, I thought.
Punch cards, they have thirty-two hundred, estimate we're a hundred and twenty-three percent on target of our goal we set last year, so we increased it by a hundred, we don't wanna be too crazy in our estimates here. Cart trail fees, we've collected twenty-five hundred so far this year, so we bumped that up from sixteen hundred to twenty-one hundred based on that. Cart storage, we just bumped that up five hundred dollars, we've collected seventeen thousand five hundred so far this year, so seventeen thousand's a decent estimate. Tournaments, we shouldn't have, George, are there any more this year that we're expecting?
Yeah, we've got, I think tournaments every weekend in September and several in, in August, including high school tournaments, so that should, should increase significantly.
So we're at eighty-five percent on target so far this year and we bumped it down to seven, maybe with knowing that those tournaments are still coming in, we could bump that number up if someone are more interested in doing that. When we get to the expenses, you'll see the subsidy we have to give to the golf course to make their budgets balance. Any increase we can make in revenue would decrease the amount of subsidy, but we also run the risk of not having enough. So if you'd like to see that number bumped up a little bit based on that information George just gave, I'm happy to do that or we can leave it at seven thousand. We've collected eighty-nine hundred.
Certainly comfortable in bumping that up to at least the ten-point-five number.
So sixteen, we collected seventy-two hundred, fifteen, we collected seventy-two hundred. It looked like fourteen, we had a good year.
We had state girls, golfing here last year.
Did we have that this year and we won't have it next year?
We'll get our state here this year, right?
But we have the state girls this year.
No, I don't.
That made a difference. I would say maybe eight thousand five hundred at least.
Something that might-
Higher, yeah.
Everyone in agreement, bumping it up fifteen hundred?
Sure.
What would that be?
Eight thousand five hundred.
I'd go with the even higher amount.
But we, I think we had a tournament this year that we're not getting next year, George, am I correct on that?
That, and again, it's a little hard to predict if some are, are gonna come, come back or not and depending on how much they participate.
I think I'd be nervous going much higher than eighty-five hundred, but I'll leave it up to you guys.
I think that's, that sounds reasonable because I was thinking more of what we get this year and we may not get the tournaments next year.
So we'll have to remember to change their amount of revenue by that increase when we get there. Rooms for rent, that, I think that's their, they rent out for parties and around Christmas time is when they receive that revenue. I think they do more of the room for rent for events during that time. Beer, thirty-seven thousand, historically we've hit that all the way back to twenty-fourteen. Even though twenty-sixteen was a little bit more, we're comfortable with the thirty-seven thousand estimate if you are. Thirty-eight for food sales. Again, we've pretty consistently hit that number. Just don't wanna be too over in our estimates for revenue without knowing anything significantly is gonna change. If you're comfortable, thirty-eight thousand. Clothing sales. Historically, we hit around sixteen or seventeen, so fifteen-one is what we have there. Equipment sales at ten thousand. Rentals and range falls, we have sixty-one hundred, that's eighty-eight percent on target so far. I think that there's a little room for that to go up, but welcome to shout out any changes you'd like to see. Cart rentals, we have it seventy thousand. We've hit seventy-two out of three years. Handicap, four hundred. We dropped that a little bit just based on this year's numbers, such a small number, any change to it's not gonna have a big impact. They also have recovery prior year expenditures. Other sources of revenue, if they sell something, but we're not gonna budget for that.
What did they sell otherwise in two, two thousand thirteen?
They sold some irrigation stuff, they sold some pine logs.
Okay.
I think there was something else basically.
Surplus irrigation system.
Yeah, and they, they had a bunch of log, they had pine that they sold, so. And then operating transfer in includes their water and sewer charges. Same amount is transferred in that they're expensed, so the estimate is fine. If it changes, we add that in our end-of-year supplemental appropriation ordinance. And then two-on-two assistance, which I have at one-fifty-six, one-thirty, but we just added fifteen hundred to their revenue, so I can change that to bring it back down so that we're not giving them more than we expect them to use. So we'll change that. Did you have a question?
I'm just curious and aside, you know, when we're looking at the season passes, we were at sixty-two and then you said they're probably maxed out for this year fifty-six and then we're budgeting down to fifty-four. Do we have any idea why that would be declining or?
Yeah, we do, we discussed that at the golf course committee meeting and it appears like attrition. We've lost some, some of the, the older members, they just aren't capable of playing or have passed away and we just haven't, they haven't filled back in. I asked Kathy and she kinda went through a list of individuals that, you know, that had previously been members.
And one other thing, didn't he, you know, make the punch cards more available to people? A lot of people are buying punch cards instead of, that's why you saw the cart number go up too and the punch cards go up. Yeah, they, instead of getting a season membership, you bought a punch card and just-
Yeah, if they don't play, you know, every year, every week.
Any more talk about rolling well, getting lost at Corning City Water?
There's always, always talk about it.
Rollaway first, like budgeted Florida.
We haven't gotten there yet, but we are still continuing to budget for golf course duration. This is a big bill. I'm sorry, I jumped over here to make those changes to our two-on-two since we increased the projected revenue for the golf course by fifteen hundred dollars. All right, everybody comfortable moving on? All right. Our Evans Punch Mineral Springs Facility, the city of Hot Springs purchased Evans Punch mid-year two thousand thirteen. Lot of changes since we bought it. They're estimating revenue in total for the fund, seven-hundred-ninety-three thousand nine hundred dollars. Return check fees, we don't have anything estimated in there. Adult admission, we have two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand estimated, we use that. We dropped it just a little bit from last year based on year-to-date numbers so far this year. We're forty-eight percent on target for this number, but I feel like that's a more reasonable projection. We really hesitate to over, over figure for revenue, so if anybody wants to see that higher, let me know. But if you look historically around where we're at, we felt two-forty-five is a good number. Adult discount, we're at fifty-five thousand, about fifty percent on target for that so far this year. So some notes include what that would be, if it was a Twilight special or a group rate, I'd get an adult discount. Everybody comfortable with those? Child admission, a hundred and thirty thousand, just down a little bit from last year. We're fifty-four percent on target for that number this year. We may exceed our one-thirty-five. Somebody's interested in seeing that get a little higher, it's also based on, you know, the history of collection for that. We didn't wanna, again, we didn't wanna be too generous with our estimates on revenue, but if anybody has any problems with that number, we'll have to discuss that. Child discount, we're at forty-four thousand for an estimate. Punch cards, forty. Memberships up a little bit just based on what we've collected historically. We're at forty-seven percent on target for this year. Membership drives have a lot to do, how big that number can get.
That's why you increased that?
Mm-hmm, because of our historical collections and then also year-to-date amount. Comfortable changing if anybody has any objections to.
Looking at when the memberships are sold, they're still actively sold as the year winds down. Would they be monthly memberships then at that point?
Yeah, there's monthly, there's three months, and so we may have somebody pay for a twelve-month membership at the end of twenty-seventeen that, we won't recognize any of those revenue dollars in twenty-eighteen, but we got to recognize all of it in twenty-seventeen, so those are sold throughout the year. They're not just for one calendar year, they can be in one month, three month.
So they're not like golf course membership?
Six and nine, twelve, there's only nine, six and twelve, yeah.
It's a yearly membership from the day that you purchase a membership.
I think they have a three-year expiration for something else, we did put a limit on that.
Everybody comfortable with that number? Donations be nice, we just don't budget for it. Birthday parties, I don't know if you've seen that party room, they moved it to the pool deck. Not sure if that's why there's been such a decrease in parties, but we thought that twenty-nine fifty was a more reasonable estimate than the four thousand eight hundred just based on history and where we're at year-to-date. Lockers, we're at fifty-three percent on target for our nine thousand. We've got way better controls over locker coin. We collect great revenue from that and as long as we can keep those lockers operational, we don't see any problem hitting that twelve thousand dollar number. If anybody'd like to see that higher a little, let me know. Towels, we're at nine thousand. Concessions, thirty-one thousand. Showers, a hundred. Believe it or not, even before we got heated showers, people take their cold showers. Hundred and fifty for Black Hills Gold Drury, these are things we sell. Fifty-three hundred for t-shirts. Fifteen-five for swimwear. Eleven hundred for souvenirs.
Before you get going too far, Misty, Black Hills Gold Drury already had twenty-seven hundred year-to-date.
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of it. We discounted it.
It was fifty percent off.
So that's why you're projecting, okay.
George had some thoughts, we've become special, or the gift shop and the sales there, but those thoughts right now are not projected in any of these numbers, this is more based on what they're selling. And then miscellaneous, they're getting rid of toys and rocks and they're putting more into the miscellaneous. Our operating transfer in includes the transfer in for water and sewer usage and a subsidy from the two-on-two fund of a hundred thousand to get their revenue to match their expenses.
And I think one of the things is we look at the sales there, I know that's always, there's always a problem with the past owners of the plunges carrying things that were relevant to the seasonal things and I don't know if there's some shows that we can maybe get Chris to go to to kind of see what the trends are in souvenirs and so forth that we might be able to increase that, increase that gift shop revenue slightly.
Very fidget spinners.
A ridiculous amount for them. That'll be such a, quite bad though. Then we'll end up with the inventory that we got when we purchased the fund. Rooms full of like booby cups and flasks and things that maybe somebody thought were cool at one time, but yeah.
That's the, that's the problem.
We were builders on that deal because we give them a million dollars.
Is it about the same too as far as year-to-date amount, is it, I mean, is that pretty much, that's not including all of June or is that already?
We've received in money at Evans Punch daily.
So that's all through?
As of the date this was printed.
That's about forty-eight percent of the money.
Of our target, yeah. Yeah, you see though, we dropped the amount we expected in that fund from the year before. Last one's our Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. The other fifty percent sailed a lot and some interest that they earn. That wraps up revenue, only one change.
It's only halfway through the evening.
What's that?
It's only halfway through the evening.
Yeah, we're doing great. So some people like to know this number, although I really don't like to share this number because it's not, it's a total of all of them and some of our funds are enterprise and some are governmental funds, but six-point-seven million is what we're estimating revenue of all of our funds.
And comparing, comparing that number to two thousand seventeen.
Budget number.
Your hopeful revenue is gonna go up by a hundred and two thousand dollars?
We're hoping, if you look at our twenty-sixteen and twenty-fifteen amounts collected and twenty-sixteen we collected seven-point-one million, so. From what we projected for seventeen compared to what we project for eighteen, there is an increase, but we expect seventeen to end better than what we projected. That's our goal every year when we do the budgets is to be reasonable in our revenue projections and hopefully see them, well, there it is.
What'd you say, the final one that was projected for?
It's on your, that one, yeah.
Is it the same?
Yeah, and see that, if somebody asks you that and you tell them that, that's not all general fund money. It includes all these funds, which some of them are restricted by ordinance. So people like to hear that number, but it doesn't really mean much, it's just a total of all of them.
So I guess we think of it as each of those funds is different colored money, so the whole deck has, you know, red, green, blue and whatever in there for revenue.
Turning green and white.
So what I'd like to do when we begin to discuss expenses is to hit the governmental funds, which would be the two-on-one, the two-on-two, the two-on-three, the two-on-five and the five-oh-one and see how far we get with those, they should be pretty easy before we jump into the one-on-one fund because there's twenty-three departments in that fund and so then we can even hit the enterprise funds and save the one-on, if we keep moving forward and we get through the governmental, we can start on the enterprise and then we'll save the general fund expenses for tomorrow, if you're all okay with that.
That's on my name. Page twenty-six.
You're a little ahead of me. Oh, mine got put in backwards after your name was.
It's my fault.
You're full, is it twenty-six? All right, yes, you were correct. Page twenty-six, then the expenses will get us started in our liquor lodging and dining fund. If you remember, this is the one that we talked about that funds, helps fund the chamber. The last council meeting, the chamber presented their budget to you, they had a hundred and eighteen thousand coming from the city. We're expecting to give them about a hundred and seventeen-six. They might be a little closer than we are since we're being modest in our revenue projections, so we're not too far off. Some of the expenses we're expecting this year, other than the eighty percent to the chamber, would be some building repair, twelve hundred, telephone expense, twelve hundred, electricity, twenty-seven thousand. And that makes up the total that we have available from the projected revenue for that fund.
I think keeping in mind that's part of our, our marketing for both tourism and for our local businesses to have events that will increase the revenue of sales tax. I think that's a good investment.
A lot of concern last year concerning damage down at the depot building. Is that being addressed?
I think what I remember was the water and having to re, and that being part of the twenty-twenty road construction project. the twenty-twenty road construction project, and us not doing anything since they're gonna address that when they come to it, that's what I, unless there's something on the hot center and-
No, I think basically that was it, but I was wondering whether there was anything that had been addressed about, other than, other than, it's been so dry it hasn't been bombing.
They, they put, uh, things on, under the door to keep the water from coming in, that's about all. We did ask them to increase their hours, so that was something that made a difference too in their cost.
Yeah, it's good, yeah, good case.
Okay, so this two-one-two fund should garner some good discussion, um, these, the amount of these dollars are considered restricted, based on that ordinance, but restricted for the things that we discussed. Um, we have the amount of revenue that we projected, um, for that fund was seven hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, and after adding fifteen hundred to the revenue for, um, the golf course, that leaves us now with the remaining fifteen oh seven, based on our projected expenses. Anything left over in here, you could decide to reallocate somewhere else, um, we'll talk about what's being budgeted in this fund, and maybe there's somewhere else you'd like to see that added, or if it's left remaining, it would go back into our cash balance or reserve for future expenses. So for expenses projected in twenty-eighteen, we have a hundred thousand for professional services and fees. This includes our ten thousand dollars to, uh, pay for one-third of the social media position at the chamber, our bid fund pays ten thousand, our two-and-two fund pays ten thousand, and the chamber pays ten thousand for that position, and we share him. We have sixty thousand set aside for chip seal projects. Bob, you asked me to get a list of the projects, I anticipated to get done with that, and Tracy's working on it, I don't have that for you yet. And then thirty thousand for flood wall preservation.
And that will take, that, that will entail what?
Um, we are in an agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and several years ago, they gave us a list and a report that included things that we needed to do to improve the flood channel, and it's patching some of the concrete, um, Kim's really, she knows more of the stuff that we're supposed to do, but maintaining.
Repair and maintain the flood wall.
Is it like just the top dressing of the concrete, or?
Ah.
We have that Kim, she knows.
Yeah, she, she knows specifically the location.
And probably figure out that number.
But it's more substantial, I'm just, uh-
I walk that stretch of the river just by every day.
The report from the Corps of Engineers is a great thing.
Yeah.
Sixty thousand isn't gonna give you that much chip seal.
Um, when we get to the streets budget, they have some money budgeted for street repairs too, but we budgeted fifty last year, it's ten more than we did last year, you're right, you know, we don't have our extra fifteen hundred there.
And it may not be chip seal, it may be, uh, overlay, depending on-
You need to start chip sealing some of your streets, or you're gonna really be having problems soon.
We're-
Working on it.
We're, we're, we've got, uh, a bunch this year, and, uh, we did it a list of priorities.
Not at sixty thousand, you're gonna have a bunch.
But-
Not at sixty thousand, you're gonna have a bunch. Did we ever make a deal with Hills Material and that rock crush up there?
No.
No.
Well, that's, that's not correct, the, the agreement's in place, Hills Material is not mining the city property at this point, so there's no potential revenue for it. But when you were talking about, when the mayor was talking about the chip seal, um, I'd like the council to have the bigger discussion about, is it chip seal or is it road repair, and in a particular case, maybe an overlay or maybe a chip seal. Uh, this year's fifty thousand dollars for chip seal, uh, there was a lot of discussion at Public Works about what road should or shouldn't be done, the explanation was given is that a chip seal isn't a repair, uh, roads that are gonna get chip sealed, people are gonna look at them and say, well, that road didn't need it, why aren't you repairing our road? And Mo's explained to us is that, uh, you can chip seal a road, uh, that needs repair, and you're gonna be back there two years later, chip sealing it again because you didn't fix the repair. So if, if the council would agree to change from chip seal to road maintenance or whatever, with the understanding that it may be a chip seal for forty thousand of it, it may be a repair for twenty thousand of it, but when you say chip seal, that's what we kind of got locked into this year, is that the council approved chip seal, not a greater conversation about a repair versus a chip seal. And as Craig was talking about, the, the argument is that you can let a road go to heck, and now you've added another one to, uh, roads that need repair if you don't chip seal the ones that are good already.
A long list of road that needs repair.
And, and Tracy's got, uh, this article coming out explaining the benefits of, of doing chip seal, but we're, we're trying to get a, a, a plan of, of action.
Do we need to change this?
Yeah, I would gladly change this verbiage, but really, you're approving a budget that's a dollar amount, and until the expenditure's presented to the council, you're not actually approving the expenditure, so I can change this verbiage to road repairs, or whatever you'd like me to, what we're doing with road repairs. That way, nobody feels like you're locked into anything, but just as a reminder, anything we approve in this budget, applicable through our procurement process, still is going to be, you know, very heavily examined before any expenses made and approved by the council, so this doesn't really lock you in to the expenses, it's just our estimates. So I changed that verbiage, so we don't have that problem again. We have sixty thousand budgeted in improvement other than buildings, this is where you see the amount we have earmarked for donations this year, uh, we have twenty thousand in total, last year we had twenty-five thousand, we have way more than that in requests, so this will be a, a conversation we're going to have when we get down to the bottom of this budget, but where we'd like to allocate that twenty, or if we want to change that dollar amount, and then once again, we're setting forty thousand aside for Southern Hills Golf Course irrigation improvements, that makes up our sixty thousand.
And is that for the front line or the back line, or just all?
It's just golf course irrigation improvement.
Be, uh, for the front line, front nine is the one that has the profit.
All right. So in the next line is the principal payment, I told you that when we were talking about the revenue we were gonna get for ours, uh, assessments, that we would also see expenses for those. These are our estimates for the back nine, bank note payment, that one was pretty set, we know what the principal's gonna be, we know what the interest is gonna be, because that note's already in place. Our Boulder Falls special assessment, we changed these numbers twice, because we thought in a bid that was lower, so our sales tax portion of it, uh, we're expecting to be lower, but we know that our sale, our special assessment piece, that if you remember, we're financing the Boulder Falls Road Construction Project with two loans, and because we are restricted to the amount we can assess based on our settlement agreement, and that wasn't enough to cover the cost, we also had to get some sales tax revenue bonds to make up the difference, so we're anticipating, uh, payments, uh, principal payments for both of those two, so those three total that to thirty-one, four ninety-one. Just name this a little bit, this is hard to see, and then the interest for those same three payments. And then our transfers out include, um, our Evans Plunge and Southern Hills Golf Course loss estimates, so I jumped over here and decreased that amount by the fifteen hundred to increase the revenue, and then forty thousand dollars to set aside for our twenty-twenty road reconstruction project, and if you remember, some of you that are new or may not, uh, council did already approve and extend it to around four hundred thousand for some architectural style lighting, so this just puts us closer to having funds to pay for that, they're setting that aside. So we're anticipating expenses with those estimates, and our two-one-two fund, seven hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-three. And with the projected revenue that we have, that leaves us an additional fifteen hundred dollars in that fund.
Okay, we have seven hundred and seventeen?
Yeah, we changed the amount, if you remember, I just explained that, let me, we don't, we don't mean to spend the expenditure, because golf course has additional revenue, we're gonna decrease that expenditure from the subsidy. So it will look a little different. And the change in the numbers, that transfer out number went down by fifteen hundred, from what you have in your book.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so now we get to do, does everybody have their budget requests from the organizations? I have mine, and if you don't?
No.
Okay, so I'll just copy each of those and write in there what their requested amounts were, and then we can start the discussion on how we wanna divvy up what we have there. They are, uh, department and our general funds, both the fire departments and the senior activities, which includes the meals and the senior center, are departments in our general fund, so they're not, um, even though they requested funds from the city, they're not included in this twenty thousand that went budgeted for in the general fund.
Misty, just to clarify, any donations that the city makes has to come out of this fund?
Um, no, I was just explaining a couple of the other, uh, our senior center and the senior meals, have a department in our general fund, and so does our fire protection.
But all the rest come out of this fund?
This is where we've had it budgeted historically. And when I say historically, I get reminded often that this is not something the city has always done, so historically, for as long as we've done it.
Again, this is one area where, you know, we as a council have to look at, uh, the value, you know, return on our investment too, as we're investing into our community in these various areas.
So I'm just gonna put in here first the amount that each requested, for those of you that don't have.
Looks like they reversed.
What do you mean?
The help line from this one is five hundred.
Yeah, that's twenty seventeen, just so you can see what we gave out in twenty seventeen, this is twenty eighteen.
Okay.
And I'm just putting the requested amount in here, but I am gonna update it, so that it will be the actual amount like twenty seventeen is, but for those of you that don't have the, um, requests. All right, so our-
Doesn't very trend with ten thousand?
No, this, this ten thousand plus, um, fourteen thousand for a new vehicle. There, so we have twenty thousand to give, we have seventy-five thousand being requested, I'm gonna sit down and let you fuck this one up.
Coward.
It's time to hurt around your voice.
Some of those are just, um, asking.
George, can I talk on the Shedco request?
You should, Kate.
Okay. You'll, you'll notice a huge difference. Would you like me to, right here, okay, or you want me to come to Sam?
Sam's having a twist in his mouth.
Twist me a little bit there. You'll see a huge change in, and for those that you don't know me, I'm Kelly Cape, I'm the president of the Southern Hills Economic Development Corporation, have been in a couple city council meetings in the past to visit with you. You see a huge change in what we requested this year compared to where we were funded at last year. I believe last year we had probably requested, I don't remember, Misty, if it was twenty or twenty-five thousand last year.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that range, potentially. One of the things that we looked at in our budget process, and I believe in the packets that we had provided to the council members, we included, um, some of our past financial statements from, uh, profit and loss from two thousand fifteen and sixteen, along with a income expense year-to-date for this year, and a balance sheet showing where we were at as of the end of June. What we ran into, um, Shedco reorganized probably four years ago, at that point, there was some leftover funding from the old development corporation, so they had kind of a slush fund to get started with. And in previous years, I think in two thousand fifteen, we received approximately twenty thousand from the city, two thousand fourteen was roughly in the same dollar amount, twenty twenty-five. And so we had a little bit of money to start with when Shedco reorganized, um, a year ago, we were able to, we had a, a couple donate two lots to us out on the golf course, and we were able to sell those and generate about sixteen, seventeen thousand worth of income, so we've been able to have some of those other outside sources to be able to help cover our operational costs. And now we're to a point where that source of money has been used up, right now, we're sitting with approximately, when we had a board meeting last Friday, we've got about sixteen thousand on hand right now to get us through the balance of two thousand seventeen, to get us through the end of the year. And, uh, we've got a little bit more than that, but part of the money is ear tag for the community engagement process that we've been doing in the city for the last, this will be the second year in the last year, we did receive some grant money to help cover the cost of that, but that's basically just a pass-through from Shedco to Dakota Resources that we work with that has kind of spearheaded that whole community engagement process. When we looked at how we were going to ask for our funding request this year, we kind of cut apart our budget, tore it apart, eliminated quite a few items, and got us back to where we felt we were looking at just the essentials to allow us to keep afloat. Uh, we are a volunteer board, we do have one full-time employee, Andrea Powers, our executive director, but the other eleven board members are all volunteers, and we looked at, we still have some, uh, travel expense that's critical, going to, uh, GOED conferences at the state level, uh, some other conferences, but we've eliminated some of those to try and decrease. We feel that our budget is approximately seventy thousand dollars a year right now, and knowing that we still have to spend some money to be able to keep our connections that we need to across the state with the various entities that we work with, the partners that we work with, to look at trying to further the economic development in Fall River County. Uh, we did make a request to the county commissioners, uh, we did ask them for a total of fifteen thousand, uh, some of you probably saw a letter to the editor that was in yesterday's paper, um, not in, you know, there's some good, good points in there. The big project that we're tackling, why we asked the county for a little more money is, we've partnered with a, um, company on a spearfish, we've talked with you about trying to do a geothermal study, and we know that there's always studies, that there's all kinds of information that's been done in the past, but what we're hoping with this is that it's actually gonna take everything there, and it's gonna get it down to a point to where if we've got somebody that's interested in starting up, say, a greenhouse, we can hand them everything, including a business plan, so that they know we can use that to help try and attract new businesses here, and knowing that that's gonna be Fall River County wide, that's not just a hot springs deal. We know that that's a large request weight, and that you've got limited funding. On the flip side, if we don't receive the funding, then that puts Shedco in jeopardy of having enough money to continue to operate. Uh, we do raise approximately a third of our budget through our memberships, you know, we've got, um, a lot of main street businesses and individuals around Fall River County that do pay a, a membership fee to Shedco, as does all of our eleven board members, so we've been able to raise roughly, oh, right around a third between the various, uh, individual memberships that we do around Fall River County. In the past, we had received more money from the state of South Dakota, four years ago, we got a, a grant from GOED- Four years ago, we got a grant from GOED to help get the office up and running, and to help cover some of our expenses, but that has been at a sliding scale. Uh, 2018 is our last year. This year, we got roughly $10,000 from them, next year we'll get about 6, and then that's the final year that we'll receive that funding. And one of the things that we look at is that we've gotta be able to justify to you that, and to the, you know, our members, that Shedco is accomplishing something. What are we getting done as far as bringing in economic development to Fall River County? And the viewpoint that the board has is where we're all a volunteer member, a paid volunteer member, so to speak. If we can't convince ourself that we're making a difference, we're not gonna invest our time and our money to be a member of Shedco either. So we realize that that's the city, the county, all of our bigger membership partners, they've gotta see some benefit of what we're accomplishing. And it's not a quick deal. You know, we've talked a little bit, we've given you some updates. I think Andrea gave you a position paper as part of the request, showing some of the items that we've been working on, some of the progress that we feel has been made, especially on the housing aspect, uh, and looking at some of the items that we're targeting and emphasizing. Knowing money is tight, but on the flip side, I look at it from the standpoint of, I've been with economic development on boards for about 20 years now. I was back in northeast South Dakota and was on that board for about 10 years, and was able to just visit with other communities. When I look statewide and look at a community our size, or smaller a little bit, I don't know of one community our size that does not have an economic development position, whether that's a volunteer board like Shedco is, or whether it's an actual city employee, because there are some communities around South Dakota where it's an actual city employee. So I, I look at it from the standpoint of, if Shedco's not able to carry that and do a good job and fulfill the mission, where does that leave us? Does that leave all the pressure, if we can't function, does that lead it back to the city?
Or the chamber?
Or the chamber, to try and pick that up. And if that were to happen, what would the budget item be? Would it be more than 30,000, or would it be less? You know, so that's one of the things that we look at there too, is that when we just, when we look at other communities across South Dakota, we felt comfortable that the dollar amount we were requesting was comparable to other cities and counties across South Dakota that we had interaction with. Now, that doesn't make it any easier for you to give us the money. But that's how we went through and looked at justifying the dollar amount that we put in for you. And looking at, if we felt we could get by for 20, we would ask 20. You know, we're not trying to add our financial situation.
Does the chamber still participate in economic development activities, or is that the majority of the bulk of that pass on to?
We have not seen, in visiting, we've got some board members that are also chamber members. We have not received any indication from visiting with people around that the chamber is involved in economic development.
I wonder how some of those?
No, they're not directly. That, that previous, that was under an economic development committee that also held the charter to do economic development.
And when there's some of those other communities, use some of that money, they fund the chamber with?
I don't know if they took some of it. You know, at times we had heard some of them were taking it out of what I call a triple B.
Yeah, yeah.
Tax to help fund it. That was one of the questions, why I was asking if everything had to come out of this fund.
We have an ordinance that establishes our LLD or triple B or whatever, but there is, you know, some money being spent there that...
Go ahead. You know, and we're looking at, we get into more than just trying to attract new businesses into town. You know, there's times where Andrea's worked with the chamber and other members or other communities on, like the Highway 71 project, where they were trying to get a grant last year to work with Nebraska to do some tourism information for, like from Chavern through Crawford up, to take advantage of all the historical and archaeological things. So there's times where we're getting outside of economic development, but it's because of the contacts that we've established throughout the state too. But the main emphasis is, what can we do to improve workforce housing and bring jobs to the community?
Could I piggyback on this a little bit? Kelly had mentioned the community engagement project that would be, we will no longer have our hired coach as of the end of this year, but that will not go away. It will be rest on our laps to continue that process. And all of those initiatives, everything that's happening right now has been driven by the community engagement project, including the city comprehensive plan. Has been strongly influenced by that whole process. The hydrothermal study that we're doing was initiated because of the demand created by the 36-plus focus groups that we listen to. And on that note, I wanted to share with you the products in brief that will be, that will result from that study. We'll have an interactive map for determining which parcels of land county-wide are appropriate to production, including subsurface and surface water, that's us here in Hot Springs. Water temperatures, chemical constituency, depth, topography, parcel ownership and impediments, both natural and other to production. A complete marketing analysis of how much demand is already existing for us. We had, we got so lucky when we wrote the grant, Rapid City Regional and Rushmore, Mount Rushmore National Monument. I asked them for letters of support, and you would think, as big as they are and as cumbersome and how much bureaucracy they have, we had them in less than 24 hours saying, yes, we need this. The third item will be developed, to develop an educational outreach tool, so that we can spread all the information and allow people, individuals, let's say Caroline decides she wants to have a greenhouse using hot water, she can go to that interactive tool and find out what type of production she needs to make it viable, to have a margin, et cetera, et cetera, so anybody can use it. And those results will be delivered in various groups throughout the county.
And when we're done, we'll have, Shedco will have ownership of that site.
We have five applicants for the fellowship this year.
Through that people are raised?
Yeah, I've had three business contacts for new startups this week. And last week, we were able to help an agency in town, a retail agi, not a retail, a servants agency in town stay in business through some retention efforts. So those, those things happen on a weekly basis.
And I think one thing, going back to the hydrothermal or geothermal, you'll probably see some news in the paper where we're going to receive a grant from Rural Development. That money is strictly ear tag for that project. A good chunk of it is covering the cost of the company that we're hiring to do the work. And then the rest of that will be expensive for us to put the information together and do the informational meetings to distribute that. So all of that is outside of our, our budget that we've been talking about.
Kelly, we've had some, pretty frankly, special other sources of funding. Have you found any substantial increases in membership or the opportunity to gain additional members from those businesses in our community?
We have it now, yeah. You know, we, Fall River, the hospital is a substantial member for us, like those energy. Also, we've reached out several times to those material, and just need to keep banging down that door. Uh, we've made some phone calls to some of the other larger, I'll call them rap-based entities that did some work down here, or are doing work down here. So, you know, it, is there the potential that we could increase our membership from roughly 15,000 a year that we generate, 15, 20, to 25, 30? Sure, there is. Um, and a lot of that is some of the board members hitting up individuals, and also, you know, just keep going. But we haven't had any success, but we've, we've started that process, and that's an ongoing deal, okay, to help us on that.
The other question I have is 15,000, the total request from Fall River County?
Yes, 5,000 was considered to be our norm, they gave us 5,000 last year. And that was for a normal operational budget. We did do a separate line item with them this year for 10, to help cover the cost of the hydrothermal project.
Why aren't you asking for at least the equivalent amount from them as you are of Hot Springs? Since you are Southern Hills and deal with the county, they benefit off of our economic development. And I feel, you know, it's not right for us to carry the entire, that entire burden.
You know, it's a good question, George. And part of it was knowing what we've been able to receive in the past from them, and feedback from what we were getting from them going into the budget cycle this year.
And I wanted people to hear that.
And I think the, the flip side of that, you know, could we went and asked them for 20, 25? Sure. Uh, I think going into it, we knew that we could ask for anything, but we knew approximately what we would be getting. And maybe that's a little, you know, conservative, but... And I think the other thing, when you look at it, um, even though we are Fall River County, and we do get into, we haven't had anything, but I think we would go into the Pringle area, where we haven't had anything with them. The majority of what we do, or what we have been doing, right, wrong, or otherwise, has been geared towards Hot Springs. And one of the things, Edgemont's a very good partner with us, the city of Edgemont.
That's what I was just gonna ask, what they gave you?
They, last year they gave us, I believe it was $3,000. They've been a very good partner. Now, on the flip side, we've heard the reverse of that, of we're giving you a donation, but what has Shedco done for our area recently? So I, I think that's when we look at, if our total budget is 70, and we're asking the, the city to kick in 30, when we look at a commensurate share as to the time investment that's involved, we're, we're comfortable with that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're asking us a group for $3,000, right? And that's, you know, almost half of your budget, right, 40,000, right?
Yep.
And I think we've had people speak to us in this group that no one that we give money to should depend on the city to stay in business, to operate. That this is, these are donations, these are just contributions, they're not meant to be the reason you can stay in business. If you don't get 30,000, I don't guess I don't understand, are you saying you're, you're done? You can't stay involved?
We run that risk, if we're not able to get a substantial funding from the city, and if we're not able to go out and all of a sudden up and down Main Street and through other individuals, raise another 20,000 through our individual and business memberships. Yeah, if, if we've only got 30, 40,000 operating with, per year, we're not gonna be in existence, that's not enough. And I, I think I wanna go back and look at, you know, we're saying we need the city to keep us viable at this stage. You know, there's some things in, in the works where if they come to fruition, you know, the idea of, we don't have an industrial park, Hot Springs never has.
There's an industrial park on that map right there, but I don't think it got developed yet.
Okay. If we did, if we had something of that nature that Shedco owned, there's a revenue stream. Right now, we have no assets to generate a revenue stream. The majority of the development corporations across the state have something. They have their industrial park, they have some tenants where they're actually renting out properties, where they're making some revenue on that. And I think it, it goes back to, not trying to be negative on it, but if, if we don't have the funding to run in the extent that we need to, to be, you know, to make a difference, then it puts the pressure back on the city, right, wrong, or otherwise, to make the decision, do we have anybody involved with economic development to try and pursue that? And let, go ahead, Bill.
Um, I'm gonna take a hit here. It's, Ms. Stacey, the 20,000 funds available, where does that come from? Is that a budget item?
Yes. It's comparing our revenue that we've projected this month or the year to the expense.
Just looking at what Shedco's asking versus what we've determined is available. You're asking for $10,000 more than we have, and nobody else gets anything. Everyone else had an opportunity to present to the full council their reasons for why they, they want the money that they've requested. Here's where I'm gonna take the hit. Shedco's now had an additional 20 minutes those other folks don't have. I get it, I understand that it's important to you to get that 30,000. It's a matter for us to figure out where it's gonna come from. I think there are other parts in the budget that if the council feels a particular item isn't needed, maybe something could be adjusted, but at this point, um, any individual can make a case for why they want the money they have. We don't have 75,000, we don't have 30 to give to one organization. So, um, I'd like to move on and, and get going on this and figure out what we're gonna do.
I, I think before we do though, I think there's some other important things that we need to understand as a city. This is probably looking at all of those to think that we give them opportunity for the most return on investment. And, uh, you know, if we look at the worst-case scenario that we don't have an economic development organization in town, GOED sends out, that's the governor's office of economic development, sends out leads from each individual company that contacts the state, and, uh, looking for a place to relocate in South Dakota. Who handles that, if we don't have an economic development organization? Shedco has benefited us.
Chamber of Commerce?
No, they don't.
But prior?
Prior, they used to.
Prior to Shedco they did.
But the chamber does not have the budget or the manpower to do that with all the, the extra marketing that they've taken on. So, you know, we have to make that decision to, to look at that, and I'm just throwing that, that out there. Shedco has probably saved us, I don't know, on the D on our grant that we've gotten, a couple thousand, 3,000?
PMs estimate between 5 and 12, depending on what they found there.
Just for our water, uh, water fill station that we're accessing, we did an environmental, needed to do an environmental study. If we would not have had access to that grant, uh, we probably, we would have had to pay that, that, that money, or prepare that paperwork in, in-house. And we don't have the expertise or the manpower to be able to, to do that. We don't have the expertise or the manpower to be able to handle those GOED things that come in. There are other things that go hit, Andrea just mentioned that she's going to Porch to Plains Conference. That four-lane highway that comes and connects us with Rapid City and the Nebraska border, gives access to visitors coming here to Hot Springs, would never have been built, would wouldn't have been for that Porch to Plains organization, which we, the Hot Springs Chamber and Economic Development, were a very big part of. The South Dakota DOT did not want to build that, because they don't like piling four lanes as opposed to two.
Excuse me, that four-lane plan was, it was in place about 30 years ago.
Excuse me, I know what I'm talking about, because I was involved with the funding of it, and what I'm talking about is the funding of it. And you didn't know, because you weren't on council and you weren't involved in those discussions. So the point is that there's a lot of things like that that go on if we don't have an economic development organization to handle that. And who's going to handle that, we need to, to help figure out. On the other hand, I am disappointed in the opportunity for Shedco to, to raise other funds. Because I, I don't wanna become into the position where... Because I, I don't want to become into the position where, you know, we're, we're the ones that are keeping them close. That has to be a community buy-in from the businesses and those that benefit within the community to do that. So we face a rough, you know, a tough decision here. But I think that you, we all need to understand as a council that there is a return on investment for what Shedco does. The other part of that is that any individual looking to move here and perhaps to start a business, the first place they go to is an economic development website. And if we don't have that access of the technology to be able to show what we have to offer here in Hot Springs, we often lose out before we get, before we get started. And these are all proven things that, you know, from the years of experience I've had working those issues was at the Chamber that we, we found out.
I appreciate your time and by no means am I trying to say we're more important than anybody else out there. I'm just, here's why we're asking you for what we are, why we feel committed to what we're doing and just explain where we're at. So I appreciate your time on everything.
And when I, I, if you took what I said to mean that you felt you were more committed, I know, I know that was my intent. Simply we got twenty thousand. At thirty thousand, we don't have enough for one and nothing's left for anybody else. So I think there are opportunities within the budget, budgeted items that, um, you know, if, if we were able to move this to the end, you know, and then determine what's left from everything else that we've looked at. You know, as an example, um, a retaining wall for the welcome park, that's $23,000. Does the council want to do that? Maybe they don't. Maybe in the context of the greater conversation, they say $20,000 isn't the right expenditure there. So I'm simply saying $20,000, if that's what, um, the mayor feels, you know, he wants his budget to be and he presents, well, you know, something's got to move, something's got to change to, to fund at the $20,000 level and to fund other folks.
Yeah, we know you have a tough decision there, but thank you for it.
I, I do know, Bob, that we have gone to the end of the business. So as far as what we say we have available right now is something that we work on. So I, I would like to see that too.
I, I can agree with, with your comments on the economic development because the one thing the community really needs is some industry to move into town with, with some well-paying jobs and so forth. But as you look, as you look at the funds that are available and you look at the organizations that are asking, last year, Miss South Dakota received $1,000. That $1,000 that Miss the, Miss South Dakota received brought in a vast amount of money in business, in lodging, in meals, in tourism, and so forth to the town. If, if Miss South Dakota is continually decreased from what they requested, how long is it going to be before some other city has the honor of hosting Miss South Dakota? Prairie Hills Transit last year received much less than what they had requested. Here's an organization that helps people that cannot get around to get around. And any decreases to that type of thing means a loss of services and, and people are going to suffer for that. I don't think anybody's going to argue that the Boys and Girls Club is not worth the amount of money that, that they go. All of these organizations. So the only, the only viable thing I think facing the council at this point, you've got $20,000 available as it is right now. Bob has suggested in going through the expenditures, there may be things that we don't really need to have. You're allocating taxpayer dollars and you're looking at things that you have to have, you're looking at things that you'd like to have, and you're looking at things that it would be nice to have. You've got to prioritize that money so that all of the things that you have got to have are taken care of. And that kind of goes back to what George was saying at the beginning of the, the meeting, with putting safety and services as a priority to the community and then addressing quality of life. I think at this point, we may be spending a little more time than is necessary because this is an issue that can be readdressed once all the expenditures are gone.
Well, on that note, I'd just like to add that the only other fund that can support that's dollars are not already designated elsewhere, that can support donations would be the general fund, which already has a cash flow number of over $100,000. So just to meet the expenditures that you're going to review in the general fund department, we are already short $104,000. So we're open to talk about more later, but I'm not sure we've got extra money.
And would you please explain to Bob what we do as a city for the, Miss South Dakota? They don't just get that.
They don't pay for the Miller Center.
I, 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 I understand. The point that I'm making is by us having, by us being the host city for Miss South Dakota, we are generating a lot of revenue for the town.
Maybe $3,000 from the city.
It's not, it's not that the only thing that the town gives them is a thousand dollars or five thousand or whatever, because they, they do have the use of the Miller Center, they have a lot of publicity in town, and they have a lot of community support.
I'd like to make a comment, but like Bob said, if we do have to make more funds available for Shedco and not the other one, yeah, that's not right. All these organizations deserve the money. So if you do it for one, you need to do it for all of them. Need to come up with $75,000.
That would certainly be a decision that the council is going to make once everything else is done.
It'd be only fair to the rest of them, you know?
Well, you start cutting your police and your fire and that ain't right in town and that's just stupid.
No, it's a tough, it's a tough decision and appreciate your, your counsel.
It's, it's a matter of prioritizing the money that you.
Because our means of finance is always so much.
I think Bob made a good suggestion that we table this particular item until we, we get to the end of the expenditures and see if there's ways that we can squeeze out that, that lemon a little harder.
All right, so we'll move on then to our two one, so we're leaving the two one two fund for now the way it is. Our two one three fund is our Business Improvement District. This is the fund that generates the revenue set by the ordinance for the per night stays at $2. If you notice, we've budgeted revenue estimates at $90,000 and expenses only at $86,100. Um, our hope is in the last couple of years, the bid, the Business Improvement District, if you look at your audits, they've spent more than they brought in. Well, they had a, an amount, a balance of cash that allowed them to do that, but you can't do that year over year. And we are not allowing any additional taxpayer dollars other than what funds this account should be spent. So what we're hoping to do is get them again to build up that cushion that they have. In this fund, through the summer months, they collect more revenue, but the majority of their expenses for marketing and advertising are spent early in the year. So if they don't have the cash to make those bills, if you remember my statement where I told them that my two hands, you have a $100,000 budget, but you cannot spend $100,000 if you don't have a $100,000 cash. So to allow them the opportunity to continue to meet their expenses at the time they do, they need a cash reserve. So we're just hoping with this decreased amount that they don't fall into a position where they've agreed to an expense based on a budget and do not have the cash available to make the payment. Everyone okay with that?
It's on the menu.
It's not much of a reserve they'd be building. We're hoping they exceed revenue and they do not exceed expenses.
What is the provision?
They have a marketing agreement and they get a matching grant funding through the state. They use Lawrence and Schiller for marketing and advertising and promotion in various different sources. They use web, they use print.
South Dakota Tourism has offers matching grants and they need to be applied for every year. Lawrence and Schiller is probably one of the best tourism marketing firms in, in the state. They keep up with all the internet data, tracking, all of that, the changes, almost year to year. And so it's, I think it's money well invested.
So the big chunk of that was Lawrence and Schiller and then there's small amounts that go to other, they do something with Yellowstone Journal, other things they determine to promote the city. Skip over two one five, we don't even have that fund anymore. Five oh one, Capital Improvement Fund, they don't have anything budgeted for expenses. If you remember, we don't have anything budgeted for revenue. As we take that in and we approve it going out, we'll make those budget adjustments at that time. Does anybody need a break? We have pushed through for the next forty minutes?
I can use five minutes.
You can use five minutes?
I can't wait.
You can take a five minute break? We're not ready to get to our next.
Yep, finish your tea.
Yep, all right. All right, so we'll go ahead and start with the expenses for our water fund. We already went through revenue and we project our revenue to be 811,750. And we're projecting our expenses around the 698, 96 mark. Water and wastewater both have very big projects coming with the downtown road reconstruction. They will be, um, putting in the ground new infrastructure and so adding to their reserves for that big project is one of their goals. So salaries and wages, I had a great question and I think I sent this out to the council, but I just wanted to remind you, um, about how we come to those estimates for salaries and wages so that, you know, it's not just a, you know, a number we added over in a three percent to. We took in each department, um, each of our employees, we added their wage after either their step or their longevity increase for the year. We added a thirty per, thirty percent minus, wait, a thirty cent COLA increase for 2018 to come up with a wage determination for the year 2018 based on those figures. We're adding the cushion by using the wage after their step because obviously some people will reach that in January, February, some might reach it in November, December. But they always have overtime or some other salaried expense that you didn't anticipate. So we think that that's a good way to build a little cushion in there without making it exorbitant. So that's where we came to the figures when we get to the estimates for pretty much everything up until this point, um, all of these figures.
That thirty cent an hour raise for the full-time people?
All of them.
Is, is above step increases?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you just go back to that screen there because it didn't look like it to me? I'm trying to figure that out.
So this is the amount we use to come to the total and then that total totals here. So we took their wage after their step increase, we added the COLA to come up with a figure, and then we use that times their 2080 or their full-time salary and then the sum of all these is how we got to this figure.
Okay, so then go down to the fifteen and twelve.
Where?
Those people there, the fifteen.
Yeah, that's his, that would be his wage.
No, the next one down.
He gets paid half out of here and half out of there.
Okay.
He's a fifty fifty. And Tracy is one that's also split, um, forty percent, forty percent, twenty percent.
All right, thanks.
Good questions. All right, so our projected salaries and wages come from that figure as do our OASI and PSICA, that includes both of the payroll taxes. Retirement is based and calculated off that projected salaries and wages figure and all those are affected by those when they increase. Workers' compensation, we have estimated at $4,500.
Why is that lower? Are there less employees this year?
No, we just got better at distributing the cost of that. So in several of our expenses, we pay as a city, but we've split our expenses by fund. So we've gotten better control than we had in the past around applying the correct percentages to the correct departments as opposed to the way we used to do it.
Okay.
Group insurance, um, that includes all of our health insurances that we have budgeted at $22,000. We always have our increase or decrease in May. We never know what that's going to be until we get it. So this is shot in the dark based on what we know right now. Unemployment insurance estimates, another one that we got better at allocating the amounts based on who's actually working and what, because now we have, when it comes to unemployment or workers' compensation, it has to do with what kind of job you do. So just because I work in water doesn't mean I get charges high rate because Barb's water, but she works here in the office, so her rate's lower. So we've just gotten better at calculating those percentages and applying the expense a little bit better. This insurance would include our property and liability insurance through our South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. Professional services and fees, um, where if you have any questions about what kind of things come out of those, like, that's what I brought my laptop for so I can look at exact, but they have a meter reader that gets paid out of there. Anytime you hire someone to do a service on behalf of the city, it gets paid out of there. About $35,000 was an estimate that Tracy felt very comfortable with. I know if you look back, there was 2014, that a really big amount, but historically, they're right around that mark. So if they're comfortable with that, we'd leave it there. Publishing, they have very little publishing expense, 200 is what we had estimate, estimated there. Rentals, 200. One of the things we tried to do when going around with departments and preparing these is to put as many things in there that they asked for, that they requested as possible. So there weren't any requests that we sat down and told them, no, they couldn't have. So as we go through all of these, you might see things in there that you question whether they need or not, but when we sat down with them, if they said they needed, they would put it in here. And like George was saying earlier, we have to trust that they know what they need, so. Vehicle repairs, we had at $3,000.
Why?
History, good estimate.
I mean, they haven't, like, 24% this year?
You never know what's going to happen to a vehicle. It's a hard estimate to make, it's.
Yeah, is that like times the oil changes and stuff like that?
Yep, or if something breaks, much goes, I don't, you know?
That's what they're comfortable with.
Yep. Remembered also this fund, cutting something in this fund is not going to help your two one two fund or your one oh one fund. We're already putting more money in their cash reserves based on what they anticipate for revenue than we have in expenses. So if we cut something here, it just puts more money in their cash reserve. But they also are a fund that throughout the year, when they need additional things, we just appropriate it because they have the cash available for it.
They had a vehicle that needed $6,000 repair. Then we have to allocate that.
$10,000 is what we have estimated for equipment repair. Tracy listed pumps, miscellaneous equipment repair. You know, you think that sounds like a lot of money, but one of those pumps goes down, uh, not a very big pump, costs over $6,000. So they, their expenses are pretty great. Historically, they have bounced around in that figure, so it's hard to know where it's going to be.
Well, they had like power electrical light needs on, put one out, didn't they?
Yeah.
So you never know.
Yeah. So that's what he was comfortable with there. 500, street and walk repair.
Ms. Tate?
Yes.
Looking at equipment repairs and vehicle repairs and, you know, looking at what's been spent so far this year and that they're down significantly, um, there's enough oversight, you know, from your department or whoever, that, that unfortunate situation doesn't happen, we get into October, November, and we're still down, uh, that, you know, that money's not going to be spent some other way because they're short here and we got it here kind of thing.
I was going to ask that. In the enterprise funds, they have their own cash. So their expenses and their revenue are tied together, it's not like the general fund. Where we see that happen more is in the departments within the general fund where their money, if they don't spend, it kind of goes back into the large pot. It does the water fund no good to waste money because it all comes from their own pot of money.
All right, thank you.
And that's why, that's why we pay you the big bucks to make sure you catch those bills that you catch up.
And we are things we don't know what they are.
In enterprise funds, their budget, when we do pass our appropriation ordinance, the budget document, you'll see all we show for them is revenue and expenditures. That's it. Because their cash stays within their fund. $45,000 is budgeted for sewer slash water repairs.
What has happened this year that they have exceeded so high?
They have planned to appropriate more money and I will, in that fund, we have it already listed and I will tell you exactly what, four-two-five-five-zero.
Well, the year-to-date, there's almost seventy-two thousand now.
Right, and they have funds to allocate towards that when they go over.
But what if they have happened that it is?
I'll tell ya, what's gone in there. That's kind of why I brought this one, so I could answer some of those questions. Because I wish I could remember everything right off the top of my head, but those, I guess, the harder that is. So big expenses for them so far this year. In the street and water repairs, HD Supply Water Works, they have biddings and such. A hydrant, they bought a couple hydrants, that was five thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. I think they installed a couple new ones and they put hydrant or two in their inventory.
Okay, is that under sewer and wine?
Yeah, these are all expenses under just that code. Couplings, curb stops, I don't know why curb stops are so expensive, but sixteen hundred dollars for curb stop. Bleed valves. Forty-one thousand for pavement, here's, this is it. Pavement repairs for multiple water main breaks for replacement. So that's the big one that put them somewhere across the budget. There are several places that.
State Farm wasn't that one.
So forty-one thousand spent with hills material for pavement repairs for multiple water main break for replacements.
State Farm wasn't water, State Farm was sewer, but it's a good example of. It's an old, it's an old infrastructure. At some point, people get tired of sewers backing up in their basements and they're on the fix.
And we will allocate them so that they're not over a hundred percent by the end of the year, but that's a great question. Fence slash tool repairs, hundred dollars. We have supplies at twenty-seven fifty and twenty-four hundred of that is for one-third of the share of roadwork sign upgrades to meet whatever that M U T C D standards stands for. Two-thirds by wastewater, another third will be paid by wastewater and another third by street. So we got a list from Rip, Matt Ripentrop from the DOT about whatever that M U T D C, whatever that stands for, signs that we should have for when we do road closures and road repairs and we needed a significant amount, so.
I think, isn't that for wave lining signs, upgraded wave lining?
This is for road construction signs. So it would include a one-lane ahead, a shoulder work flagger, no, we didn't have anything for a flagger. Be prepared to stop, stop ahead, roadwork ahead, survey through, right and left lane closed ahead, right, left lane reduction, stop, emergency signal ahead.
Is this what one of the things when they're here tearing up the streets?
Yeah.
I guess, my question is, why don't, why does DOT and the construction company pay for that?
And not only we lost the shopper and the family, we're struggling. So that's why you see that number increase because they're paying for portion of those signs since they all use them.
Surplus them itself.
What sense? Smoking at eight hundred. Janitorial supplies at four hundred. Minor tools at seven thousand, he has saws, valve keys, et cetera, listed in there. Purification chemicals, eleven thousand. That looks lower than years past, but our obligation to chlorinate the water had changed and so he's very comfortable with that number, that they decrease. Gas, oil and diesel, who knows what the price will be, but seven thousand, he was comfortable with that number. It had been higher, got better controls in place, so they stopped driving or they got nicer vehicles or gas prices went down, I'm not sure, but seven thousand's what we're estimating for this year. Travel and conference at a thousand. Water doesn't have utilities or telephone because they live at the wastewater treatment plant. Electricity is the big bill for the water department, valve pump stations, that's at forty-six thousand. And cell phones at fourteen hundred. Machinery and equipment, they would like a three-quarter ton truck to replace the blue two thousand five Dodge twenty-five hundred and a trailer, a twenty-four, twenty-six foot trailer for hauling pipe and machinery. And these are estimates, just approving this budget gives them the opportunity to shop for those in twenty-eighteen. They definitely have the revenue for that. It's something that you can discuss and possibly cut, but they feel like they need it and there's an opportunity to repurpose the truck they're surplusing in another department within the city.
Yeah, I think that the department tentatively has been identified, that's one that's going to the airport.
Yeah, that is the one that.
Is there something wrong with the truck?
No.
It's just, it's older, I don't think it has any significant issues currently. They, Water got a new truck a couple years ago. They're just looking to upgrade and there's an opportunity for us to repurpose that in a general fund department that maybe wouldn't have the money to buy a new truck. That is approved in this one.
And if the council were to say they didn't want that, that can't go back into the.
Two-on-two?
To put towards donations. It gets spent here or it doesn't get spent here, it stays here.
Really, the council could decide to transfer thirty thousand from the water fund to give to Chekko. I mean, you have, you would probably have some uproar in the streets, but you would have.
So then would you tell us that we can't do that?
You cannot do that. It typically would not be paid out of this fund. Thank you.
Well, the money, if I understand this correctly, if they don't spend the money, it just goes back into the cash reserve, it's gonna be held for the big.
Yes, for any asset they have.
For any pretty big emergency, that we have to keep a pretty good amount if we have a major.
I think we're probably gonna need to keep cash from the fund.
For pavement, for water being dirty.
Like the one we have.
Absolutely, absolutely. They have SRF repayment loans, they had a water main replacement project. Albany, Detroit, and this information on what that money was used for comes from Tracy because that was before my time, but that's what the SRF loan repayment was for, was for those projects. And so we have principal and interest payments there. If you look back, you don't see anything in here. We budget for, because it affects cash, the principal payment, but it's not truly an expense because the balance sheet for the water fund has the liability for that loan and the principal reduces the liability. The interest is an expense, but you don't see the principal listed as an expense because it actually reduces the liability on the balance sheet. But we do budget for it in these enterprise funds because of the impact on cash. Hundred thousand dollars transfer out to the general fund.
And the bulk of that money is just in straight checking? The, the cash that they have reserved?
Yeah. They do have some CDs.
Yeah, there are some CDs.
There's a water CD and a sewer CD. And our CD rates, we just changed it from a three-month to a twenty-five month term because our three-month term was like point zero zero five, which was less than you get in the checking account at Bank of West.
I kind of wonder whether it wouldn't be prudent to keep more in CDs and.
Water fund gets down to about a hundred thousand in the Wells Fargo companies just along the K, the majority of the expense of that.
But even if they need to pull money out of that, the penalty is not really gonna be that big of a hit, is it?
That's a ten, I'm agreeing on with the name.
There's one other area that I've been looking at that I think we, we need. We don't have the exact amount to budget it for two thousand eighteen and that's emergency electrical power for water, water pumps. Right now, if we lost electricity, depending on time of year and the stage of the tank level, we have a day, maybe two, depending on usage, to get that power back on. I think it's prudent on us to have an emergency power source to do that. Tracy's looking at getting an estimate for some kind of mobile power. We also have Gentril looking at that too. And I just, I just feel that's a prudent thing to have. Be very difficult to explain to our community why.
Just as one of emergency management identification and issues that we need to resolve.
Was it, okay, okay.
Is there, is there also works in progress for emergency purification in the event of some contamination in the water?
No, I don't, no, that's why we, we are, we have funded and are in the process of securing our water storage facilities.
With the pension.
And also pumping stations.
So whether that happens this year or next year, we can always appropriate the dollars for that expense.
Yeah. What was SRF loan, what were those called, those two loans?
I'll tell ya.
How that could.
Albany and Albany.
Albany Water Main Replacement, Detroit Avenue Water Main and Sixth Street Water Main.
They have to borrow that money to do those.
So ballpark, what do you think that emergency, January thing is gonna cost?
I would say it's somewhere in the neighborhood thirty thousand. Just from rough estimates that Tracy has looked at, but we, we have to, you know, refine that. It's pretty much got a capacity figured out, but we're looking for Gentril and then to see if there's something that's available in surplus that we could use. We felt it was better to have it as a, as a mobile as opposed to a stationary. One stationary one, you know, it's stuck there and if we've got a need for, for example, to support, you know, fire group or something.
I think Red Cross and we're looking into all that too, so. They can get some from the others, but you know, how long does it take and are they gonna use it?
Yeah. And if it's something like a, you know, blizzard, we can probably plow our way out a lot quicker than, you know, if the power outage due to something that's happening right, so.
And then they likely happen this year or two, it could happen this year or next year. The generator virtuals.
Yeah.
She was saying they could use it, it could be mobile if they needed it, right?
Maybe a stupid question, but when, if the power went out and the grid goes down here, is there gravity fed water to some places too, or is it all relied on electricity?
Well, it's, it's gravity fed and so we would have, as long as there's water in the tank, people would have water.
Okay, but that.
But once that tank's gone, then, you know, we don't have any way of getting water up to the tank. And it would be to just start.
And how long would that tank last?
Yeah, has it been how long now?
It depends on the level that it, because it, you know, it draws down and then the pumps kick in and fill it up. So it depends on that and then the time of year of water usage.
Probably not.
If you had a fire.
Yeah, probably not very long.
Or for example, if you had a fire, you know, we're using a lot of water, fire in town, cut the power out, you know, major catastrophe like that, it could down very quickly. If it, we're in the winter time, it probably, you know, you might have a couple of days.
Just also stay home and the VA would also be affected and those are, they use our water.
That's a good point.
They use our sewer, they both have their own water.
So I mean, I think part of this expense could be shared by them.
Interesting thought.
If we share the machinery with them. Except we'd need it, if there was an emergency, we'd all need it.
Except, you know, if it was this big for longer. I think Frank Maynard actually is who needs to be talked to about that. I think Frank Maynard needs to be visited with that issue because I think we've already discussed a lot of that.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'd like to go back to the thirty thousand dollars for the truck.
It's for a truck and a trailer?
Truck and truck, yep. Someone had asked condition of the existing truck. Now, is there anything about it that, you know, they need to get replaced? I don't remember the exact figures, but I believe Tracy had said that when the road project comes through, there needs, there's gonna be about two hundred thousand dollars coming out of water fund, there's gonna be about two hundred thousand dollars coming out of sewer fund to take care of that.
I thought it was like seven hundred and twenty-five thousand each.
Out of each?
Yeah.
So it makes the case even better then, that if they don't need a truck, go ahead and give them the trailer, but keep as much money in that fund as we can.
They actually are sitting in pretty good positions even currently that we're not significantly impacting their ability to do those improvements. So at Bank of West, they have seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in there. They have a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar CD and then cash at Wells Fargo and this is just the water fund, right now they got a hundred and thirty-three thousand, so.
But you said seven hundred thousand was coming out of each of them?
That was Tracy's initial estimate for what it might be and so we're thinking of adding another hundred and twelve thousand this year to their cash reserves based on these estimates, next year we'll do the same. They'll continue to grow and I just don't think thirty thousand is gonna make a big difference in whether or not they can get their project done. But if you.
Twenty-five thousand.
Take that out, twenty-five, yeah.
The conversation was just the truck, if they don't need a truck.
Oh, let's try again. They say they do.
They take good care of their truck actually, I've noticed.
And it does give us benefit because we do need a truck at the airport. I don't know if you've ridden in a Cadillac.
And actually the park wants that truck back. So if this truck goes to Ed, Ed gets a new truck. They get their old little blue truck back that they contain in smaller places that they wanna keep till they run the wheels off a bit, everybody's happy. I think we could probably get through wastewater before we finish for the night if everybody's game. Tracy do it? This is my favorite fund, not because I'm a big sewer fan, but we all should be because it's very important. Yeah, because this fund makes money. So same thing for these first numbers, you know, we did estimates smart as we could to project salaries and wages without any significant changes in their current structure. Same with the payroll taxes, retirement, workforce compensation, group insurance, unemployment and our South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance insurance. Professional services and fees in the sewer department, they're twenty-five thousand. If you look at where they're at year-to-date, that might be a little high, but you look back historically, it kind of bounces around. Two hundred for rentals, in case they need to rent any equipment. Vehicle repairs, they have two thousand budgeted, haven't spent much this year. Building repairs, they have twelve hundred, they do maintain the facility that houses both the water and wastewater. Equipment, they have six thousand, we've gone over that before. Tracy was comfortable with that lower number, didn't think there'd be a lot of big things they needed to purchase this year.
That's quite a reduction from the two thousand seventeen.
It is, and I think that he had something specific that they were purchasing or that they planned to purchase in two thousand and seventeen and so, again, this fund, if they need something and they have to buy it, we just let them use their reserves. Sewer water repairs, continual improvements have reduced sewer and water repair expenses, why that number is estimated to go down. And their supplies and materials, they have eleven hundred requested for supplies, seven fifty for clothing, they have a boot reimbursement they have for their employees annually. Janitorial nine hundred, that's janitorial supplies, not services. Minor tools, they're at fifteen hundred is the request. Gas, oil and diesel, three thousand. The signs and other expenses, that includes their one-third share of those road closure signs we've looked at. Travel and conference, nine hundred. Telephone, fourteen hundred. Electricity, twenty-three thousand. Propane, they have to heat this much. So I, when I first saw how much I spent propane, I was like, what? Why is that so high? Then I learned what they do with it, so they need that. Nine hundred for cellphone reimbursements. For machinery, we have twenty-three thousand and they'd also like them to pick up.
The improvement in buildings, is that the slushy watering device installation?
Yes, yeah, and that is a big thing we're appropriating for, good catch, that one's really high so far, isn't it? Yeah, hundred and eight, so it's the design, the engineering services and we have not paid the installation bill yet, so that doesn't include that, but we'll have to appropriate for that when the expense comes. we have not paid the installation bill yet, so that doesn't include that, but we'll have to appropriate for that when the expense comes. Nothing for computer software, they also have, they also have SRF loans. It was for an outfall line project in twenty-tw- ten that went out Fall River Road.
What about that machinery and equipment?
It's a new pickup, purchased fifteen hundred. So fifteen hundred four-by-four they extended or crew cab. Principal and interest payments for their loans, and their hundred thousand dollar subsidy. So, five oh seven, one eighty-one, and here's why they're my favorite. Um, projected revenue in that fund is seven hundred and sixteen thousand. Projected expenses, being reasonable and giving some cushion, um, five hundred and seven, lets them put two hundred and eight thousand back in the, back in the pot for the big projects. And it's eight o'clock.
We don't have to stop at eight o'clock.
We don't have to stop at eight o'clock. If anybody wants to go on, we can continue through the rest of the enterprise funds and break there. We only have the solid waste, which is really easy, and then Gulf Course has two, um, departments. It has Jason's and Kathy's, I don't know why they're separate, they have to be the same, and then we have Evans Fund. If you wanna keep trudging through, you can, or we can stop.
I agree with you.
Okay, that's fine, thank you for your time.
I do thank, I do thank all of you for coming, and again, I, I apologize for getting a little hurt with, uh, some of the comments that came, and I just cannot stand the mistruths that come, so, I apologize.
We all have that sometimes.